Yes, sure. They use that for chair locking lower forward end down on the left side. Sure.
So we'll call this evening's meeting to order. So welcome, everyone.
Okay.
Please let the minutes fill, but it's all councilors and attendants, with the exception of Councilor Patterson. He may be joining us a bit later. Not certain. Also, we have members of our staff and members of the media and some special guests in the council chambers this evening. So welcome to everyone. Item three is approval of the agenda.
Councilor Smith had moved to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
Motion has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any questions? Here now, those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item four, approval of the minutes of the meeting from May 14.
Motion to accept minutes from May 14. We didn't do that. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions? Now, those in favor, raise your right hand. Just carry. Item five, approval of the minutes of the meeting from May 28.
Councilor Smith will move to second please.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes on May 28, their full session. Any question? Here now, those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item six, conflict of interest. One this evening. And we'll move on to item seven, for statements, presentations and additions. And we'll begin with our financial audit with Len Han McCain. And welcome. Yes, please.
Let him in the building.
I think he came by invitation.
She big shoes, I sit in the Councilor Patterson's. Long to the day yourself. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There's a reason why I'm harassing him, because over the years, he's given me a lot of bruises.
Yeah.
I hope so.
So thanks for the invite. Review the 2023 copy of the audited financial statement. Try and go through it as efficiently as possible, but if there were any questions that anyone has as we run through. So we normally kind of cover the financial results for the year, the financial position at the end of December of 2023 in this space. And I guess any issues that might have arisen during the audit, I can start there and say there really wasn't any smooth. Thanks to Rob and Tina for all their help during the audit process. As everybody would appreciate, not a lot of fun having a hundred friends asking all kinds of questions. But we reached the point of having financial statements that were comfortable reviewing with you tonight. The audit opinion, like a couple pages in is the auditor's report. And I won't read that because it's two pages, but I'll read you one paragraph. Reads in our opinion, as the external auditors, the accompanying, this is three pages in. The accompanying consolidated financial statements present fairly in all material respect, the consolidated financial position of the town at December 31, 2023, and the results of its consolidated operations, changes in consolidated net debt, and its consolidated cash flows for year ended in accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards. So that's known as a clean or unqualified audit opinion, being basically in layman's terms, all was good. So no issues of any kind that affect the report. Can we drive? On to the results. He sent out, I was in the chair. All right, keep going.
Keep going.
Okay. I left you popping out the end. So page number seven is the results. And I guess I'll go with four lower, it was good year financially for Heartland. Again, no issues, but good results. So public sector accounting board standards are a bit tricky because, for example, the complex, as a big example, the revenues, you'll see in the right-hand column on page seven, under the revenue section, the top half of the page. The total revenues were about 9.5 million for the year. The total expenditures for public sector accounting board standards, about two-thirds of the way down the page, were 4,155. So for, again, I keep saying public sector accounting board standards, that's a surplus of 5.3 million and change. The reason for the surplus is the complex, as an example, doesn't count kind of in the expenditure section on this page. It counts kind of in the new asset section on another page. So more of that, more on that in a couple of minutes. But for for public sector accounting board standard, the surplus is 5,333,249. When we add that to the accumulated surplus at the beginning of 2023, which was about 5,177, you can see it nearly doubled the circle, the ongoing or the accumulated surplus from 5 million and change to about 10.5 million. But again, more commentary on what that really means. Kind of non-public sector accounting board standards, all governments, provincial, federal, municipal are prepared on this basis. It's so it's consistent with prior years, consistent with other governments. It's just, in my opinion, a little bit limited as to the information it provides. Because if you just stop there and said, oh, it is surplus of 5.3 million, great, let's let's start investing in this, investing in that. So the cash flows, of course, as an example, the money that was raised and funding and so on was all used. So it's not like there's five extra millions sitting in the bank account. So again, I'll elaborate on that in a second. Flipping back one page, two pages, sorry. You'll see the financial, the state of the financial position. So before we elaborate on a different way of looking at those results, you'll see this is the other key page besides the results page would be the financial position at the end of the year. You can see the top third page between bank balances, investments, amounts that we're owing to Heartland at the end of the year. The total of those things was almost 3.9 million, 3,893, so that's the financial assets total. The liabilities is the middle section of the page, totaling 4,282, which would include loans, capital borrowing board, capital borrowing board type loans, accounts payable, the monies owed to contractors, all those kinds of things. Pension obligation, et cetera. So the total of all those things were 4,282. So that leaves what's known as a net debt, just the spread between the assets, total of the liabilities total of 389,000. For our perspective sake, the year before, we haven't got, usually we have a comparative column because this is the first year of the new Heartland, down in Heartland, district Heartland, Heartland. There isn't a comparative, so we've reached out multiple times to problems to kind of ask for direction on what to do of the prior year and haven't received anything really concrete back. But couldn't really show me prior year because the 2022 year was a different set of, you know, area. So this is the only time you'll see the financial statements really in the 2021 year, sort of a comparative year with it. So it kind of limits a little bit the look at the information. But one thing I can highlight on that net debt number, like the spread between the assets and liabilities, it's 3.9 at the end of the year, at the beginning of the year, it was about 7.53. So it's come dead, it's reduced from 7.50 and change to about 3.90, which is a healthy reduction in that net debt. Obviously, the lower that number, the better, because you don't want the assets to be too much lower than liabilities ideally. So that has improved during the year. And again, that just gives you kind of a look at what some of the asset types are, some of the liability types. I do want to circle that for a second because last year, we had looked at, besides the results themselves, according to public sector accounting board standards, we had looked at a supplementary schedule that kind of takes that number and probably turns it into something a little more meaningful for for mayor and council. So I'll certainly that and spend just a couple of minutes describing the information on that.
Do you have any coffee to drink? I think we're good there. Is Rob? He's got one.
So not a lot of numbers on this page, but it will take the surplus that we looked at on the consolidated statement of operations and and sort of adjust it for various things. You'll see, we add that amortization, we started that 5,333 that we saw in the first step that we looked at the results page. We're adding that amortization, also known as depreciation, but that's a non-cash item. So that's just the accounting recognition of assets that have been owned for years or were acquired during 2023. So we're kind of saying, let's add that back to get more of a cash surplus number. Let's deduct the amounts that are in the that are in the revenues, but not in the expenditures. So I described the complex, there was about $5 million during 2023 alone. Money revenues complex related, expenditures or investments complex related. So that 5,533 is having a big impact or big influence on that surplus that we looked at. Similarly, similarly, but to a smaller degree, the gas tax money that was used for like road servicing and a couple of things during 2023, let's have the list here, some reclaim work and some pavilion or gazebo work. Yeah, so there was about 270,000 new assets. So again, the gas tax money is in the revenue total, but the expenditures, because they were for new assets, don't show up on that original page we looked at in the expenditure total. So this schedule kind of takes that and adjusts for it. So we have the original surplus, add a vacuumization, subtracting or taking out the effect of new assets, which leaves that adjusted total of 4.49, and then subtract from that the principal portion would be made on loans during 2023. To give you what I would describe as more of a cash surplus number, a bit more meaningful in in terms of managing and planning and so on. And we include a couple of years prior to that, we'll probably keep, if we continue on with you guys in 2024, keep adding a column and it gives you a little more comparative to prior years to kind of see where things do. So you can see that past surplus was about $300,000 for the 2023 year. And that compares to slight or modest deficits in 22 and 21, taking those same variables and adding and subtracting to get to from a PSAT surplus that is a bit, could be misleading if it's if it's thought at that point and and wind away down about the cash surplus. So we've been through that in in a fair bit of detail with with Rob and Tina in previous meetings and conversations. So I know we're zipping through that fairly quickly, but that's all to say it's it's positive. You know, it's if that number of that current cash surplus, that is a number of negative 200, you know, probably a different tone of the conversation as far as what, how that happened and and why that happened and that kind of thing. But that's that's very positive. And then the bottom part of the page, we're just showing you in 2023 and 2022, how much revenue was recognized complex related and how much was invested or expended complex related. So you can see the numbers for the two years. And then, of course, there'll be a 2024 number as well as things move towards completion of the conflict. So again, one pager, quite a few numbers on there. But I think if I'm, you guys, I'm finding that a little more useful than just a a number on a page that says for accounting purposes, there was surplus of 5,3 million, that's, yeah, in and of itself, not very meaningful. Any questions at that point? That the last couple of things that I would highlight are, I find it helpful and useful to comment on any new loans and any of the new assets. So the new loans will be a three-second conversation, there were no new loans, so you didn't add anything to the debt load in 2023. It's hard to do more on it. On the new assets side of things, there were five or six. We talked about the gas tax money used for street surfacing, reclaim, pavilion, gazebo. There was money donated, I think, from the fire department to acquire a new boat. And there was a Kubota compact tractor that was leased during 2023. So that is a new asset, it comes, of course, with a lease obligation, but that converts the new asset. So in total, about $280,000 invested in new new assets during the 2023 year. So again, an important kind of number or or amount to keep tabs on, I believe. So. As far as financial statements, there's a lot, you know, it's very detailed. The problems, for example, needs all kinds of note disclosures. I did when I was going through the financial positions, there's a lot of note references there, note three, note five, note this, note that. Just means there's kind of more detail further along in the audited financial statements. It gives you, you know, the composition of different balances. So not going to take the time to go through those, but.
Just one question.
Yeah.
Yeah. On page five, under the liability section, we approved sick leave and other benefits. And I know to note pen, if you didn't pay it.
Yeah.
Having not read note pen, is that where, in a range where we're supposed to be?
It is.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah. And see if I can, yeah, so. That that particular note isn't very worth. Just to give you a feel, the municipality divides every full-time employee a sick leave entitlement that accumulates at a rate of 1.25 days per each pound of the year. So that's that's how sick leave would be accumulated. And then vacation day, of course, will be the other variable, but employees generate entitlements during the year that would carry over into the next year type of thing. So yeah, I'm saying it is in the range of normal. Yeah. I think the pension obligation is new this year. We hadn't had, hadn't ever been on the financial statements previously. So that's again on page five, the statement of financial position, that's a liability that did exist that had not been recognized previously. So that pension obligation is about 37,900. Unfortunately, there's a lot of disclosure, like a lot of, so that's two pages, believe it or not, on the balance of $37,000. It's just the required disclosure that's that's applicable to audit financial statements. So there's a fair bit there. The the loan is page, is page 16. And as I say, there were no new loans for, no, no, yeah, new loans during 2023. The bottom part of page 17 gives you a feel of what the upcoming, over the next five years, what the loan obligations are. Again, from a cash flow standpoint, an important number to keep keep tabs on. Obviously, need to generate enough money during the year or have enough money left over during the year to make those loan payments. So, you know, very manageable and during the couple of years we've been involved, I've seen now.
No, those are the numbers that. During 024, are they going to be paid off?
Don't remember any that would be paid off during the year.
Not till 2025, this is.
The earliest ones, 2025, yeah, I didn't bring that detailed schedule, but I didn't think there was anything due that would be paid off during 2024. Oh, yeah, sorry, the year's on there. So yeah, 2025 is the first, 26, 26. So yeah, there's a maturation along for each one. So yeah, one to 25, 26, 28, 29, 29, and 31. Yeah, respectively. Yeah, so again, lots of information in there, trying to keep it to the highlight level, I guess.
Last question.
Yes.
So you touched on the cash flow requirements and like many municipalities, our cash flow situation was not out of its glory. On page eight, you had a statement on cash flow.
Yes.
Can you touch on some more?
Yeah. Yeah, I can't. I usually, so I usually start at the bottom of that page in in reviewing it or explaining it. So it just makes the most sense to me, see, to try, try it. So at the end of the year, the cash position in total was 2,431.
331.
Oh, sorry, page eight. Yeah, so it's called the consolidated statement of cash flow. So this bankers like this one, because it gives them an idea, a snapshot as to why the cash balance changed during the year. So at the end of the year, it was 2.431, at the beginning of the year, it was 1,117. So the third line from the bottom says increase in cash, 1,313. So the overall cash position improved by 1,313. Anything kind of above that, if it's got brackets, it was kind of money out, like a use of cash. A good example would be the loan payments. So about five or six lines from the bottom, you'll see long-term debt, 1.49. So payments on the long-term debt on the loans were 1.49, so that's cash we know went out. An example of money coming in, proceeds from short-term financing, I guess where that shows up in the bank account, we weren't calling that new loan. So any any money borrowed would be money in, wouldn't have a bracket, money out would have a bracket. The surplus at the very top, you would think a profit or surplus would be a positive. So it is a positive, but you can see the big, the big kind of negative amount halfway down the page is acquisition of tangible capital assets. So we said, you know, over $5 million invested in the complex, $270,000 in gas tax funding was invested in new assets. So those new assets that I described and the complex, that that was 5.4 million dollars of money out of the bank account during 2023 to pay for those things. So the the kind of ins and outs, accounts payable says 845, meaning to read the whole thing, but did we feel for these numbers? Accounts payable says 845. What that means is accounts payable went up from the end of 2022 to the end of 2023 because you owed more money at the end of sex. That's money still sitting in the bank account because you haven't paid. And that's just a timing thing, right, as far as working on the complex in particular. Those billings, those progress billings come in and they get paid in January, maybe or February or March. And you would use money that was in the account at the end of December. So the cash payable being a positive number just means that accounts payable number was higher at the end of the year. You were kind of financing in a way the payables because you hadn't paid them yet. So all those kind of either no brackets are kind of money in and brackets of money out, all netting to that 1.313640. Again, third last line to the bottom. But you got to have to look at the cash improvement along with what is there for liabilities or things to pay off. And as I said, accounts payable were fairly high, again, timing related. At the end of November, December, 2022, a lot of stuff had been paid, it wasn't that much. So it was owing at the end of last 2022 year. At the end of 23, just the way things are billed, that kind of thing, it was a fair bit falling. So that helped the cash position just at that point in time. Because your your year-end date is kind of what was the scoop at December 31, 2023 in this space. So that's a, does that help at all?
It is, like, obviously an unusual year financially.
Yes.
You would be hurting by those numbers.
Yes, agreed, agreed. Yeah, I mean, the cash was up 1.3, but it needed to be higher because there was, again, lots of things in 2024 that you needed to pay for. So if the cash hadn't gone, that would have spelled, you know, sort of trouble or or concerns, which which it didn't because you had lots of money built up to pay for them. So again, I think the audited statements, we don't have the first few pages, so there's 34, 35 pages in total. There's all kinds of detail in there, but and certainly encourage active meeting type, if you know something or want to know something. Certainly encourage questions that can come to our office or through Rob and Tina, whichever is easy. I think the only other thing we usually touch on is the, there's the public sector accounting board standards, the governments are required to prepare their the financial statements on. And then there's the old standards, which are kind of known as the rate-setting standards. So even though they're the financial statements this way, there is a schedule in here that is used for rate-setting sake. So I will comment that in both the utility fund and the general fund, there were modest surpluses. So that's, again, I think a positive in that they're they're not huge numbers. Is there anybody that's familiar with kind of how that works, anything that's surplus or deficit one year, kind of comes into the budget two years later? So that number that will come into the, from 2023, look in the 2025 budget, is not a significant number. It will be sort of problematic in 2025 budget and say.
Andy, would you see that on page 25, is where they can see those two surpluses, the bottom line, 61.
Exactly right, yeah. Yeah, that page is printed landscapes, you kind of have to turn it sideways. But yes, the first two columns on page 25 show a general operating fund surplus of 61,038 and water sewer operating fund surplus of 66,308. So yeah, those two numbers will carry forward and back to your 2025 budget.
And and while I agree that they're they're marginal, they're not larger, it one carried into this year was 91 deficit.
Okay.
There's 61 surpluses.
Yeah, so the the real relevance to those numbers is that becomes part of your budget, becomes part of your probably tax assessments calculations. So. This is a kind of a quick overview of results and financial position and new assets and new loans and the accounting surplus under the old standards, which are still used, makes the financial statements a bit confusing. We've got two sets of numbers in there that are relevant for different reasons. So it's it makes it a bit tough to get the head wrap completely around. But I think, you know, one of the key, besides the statement of financial position that confirms, you know, you guys are in good shape at the end of December 2023, that one-page supplementary schedule, I think, gives you an angle on what was our surplus adjusting for certain things. It gives us kind of a, from a management standpoint, more of a relevant surplus deficit number. As I say, the fact that's improved, bear that component on 22 is, yeah, I would consider 23 a very encouraging, very positive financial year result.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Lenahan?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, I'm going to proceed my suit back to the audible desk. You need to go over there. Okay, thanks for having me on, everybody.
You're welcome.
Any, any, everybody's signing, I think. Up to you guys.
Thanks.
I wish I knew, I have the time to be audited, I will do it. And the representation, I will put it. You will commission this, what's, I will do it. Well, that'll be for us, when any of you guys will be sure to have it. Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I could be more honest, I didn't have a public just like, oh, no, I can't remember who you last seen. You can complete it.
Yes.
We can. All right, thanks, Andy.
Thank you. Item seven two. Page eight and C, right in wind farm. Please join us.
I am welcome.
You're welcome. Your shirt's here. You can.
Here, there you go.
So did everybody get a copy of the?
We did.
Okay, well, I've been here before, so I don't think I really need to introduce myself, but I live out in South Knowlesville. And I would say about a month ago, we heard about this potential industrial wind farm coming to our area, like literally, in the hillside opposite us. Now, we heard about it through the newspaper, even though we live there, there was no courtesy at all to see if, you know, we would be okay with it or anything like that. It just, so I immediately got in touch with Mike Holland, who then was Minister of Natural Resources and Energy. He said he knew nothing about it and with power had no agreement, they hadn't even started on an agreement at that time. We then got in, this is only a month ago, then got in touch with Margaret Johnson. She said she knew nothing about it either, as far as she knew, they had to start doing an environmental impact assessment. So those are, you know, those are the two kind of people in our area. So we decided to do our own research. And I will say to preface all of the discussion is I'm not against wind farms per se, but I think the whole issue of wind farms is where do you site them? And in Europe, they have to be on agricultural land, they're not allowed to cut down trees. They have to be on agricultural land where cows and crops can go along underneath. In the UK, the on the onshore wind farms have been so controversial that they have them all offshore now. So once you start looking into wind farms, that actually there's quite a lot to learn. So the first thing that sort of happened was somebody from Hatch Consulting, which is the company that actually has partially done the environmental impact assessment, which if you want to get it, if you want to have a read of it, it is at the Florenceville Library, two binders. They dropped off two binders in Florenceville. None at our library here in Heartland, although I would venture to say it's more the people of the Heartland municipality that will be affected by this thing than the people in Florenceville. But anyway, so they came and dropped off one or two flyers, that's all they did. And not in the Environmental Impact Assessment Regulation, the Act 6.1, the proponent has to do a public consultation. So that's what we're calling. So that's what we're calling for is that, that, you know, that Irving comes and puts on public consultation where people can ask questions, have their, uh, fears and anxieties or their enthusiasm, at least being able to talk about it. Uh, from what we've learned, it's fifty eight turbines will be going up through that hillside. Uh, each turbine, they, they come in at, on a three lane highway. So that they'll cut through that land on a four lane highway because they gotta go over and down and on the hills. Now Irving does say that it's their freehold land. I mean, I think this is a key point, uh, that it's freehold.
What, explain that to industrial freehold.
Well, industrial, I didn't know much about industrial freehold either. But industrial freeholds started with the railroad companies. All the railroad companies, when they first came to New Brunswick, or maybe all over Canada, got a certain amount of territory on either side of wherever the railroad.
So that land out there is not crown land, it's, it's.
There is a portion of crown land, but it's bordered, that, that it's mostly what J D Irving is calling industrial. Well, I don't think they call it industrial freehold, they just call it freehold.
Is this still on by railroad?
No.
So when the railroad roads went down, freehold became attached to anybody that had a mill. So there were forty five mills at that time, they all had a piece of freehold, that way they could guarantee supply. And then it gradually, you know, came down to just a few people having this freehold. But this freehold land, whether we like it or not, is under legal, uh, legal position from the First Nations that it is unceded territory. So they say that freehold and crown land is unceded territory. So either which way, uh, you know, to put something up there while you still have a court case is irresponsible, in my opinion. And if you look at the back, do you have any, yeah, if you look at the back, so that white bit in the middle is what they say is their industrial freehold. And these two, three pink things are the protect, they are legislated New Brunswick protected natural areas. And at the very top, right adjacent to the crown land area is the headwaters of the Merri Machi, the Beckett Wimick and the Nashlock. So these sort of things, once people start finding out about them, the Atlantic Salmon Federation wants to go up there now because, you know, they have a duty to look after the salmon runs. So, uh, so this environmental impact assessment, firstly, I think the library here should be dealt with on an equal basis and have the environmental impact assessment. You can go on the J D Irving website and download, if you were, if you were wanting to, you can get the environmental impacts assessment there. Three appendices have not been done, L, M, and N. And those are largely the ones that deal with species at risk and, you know, there's all manner of, uh, requirements under an environmental impact assessment to make sure that you're not, you know, disturbing bats and you're not disturbing any of the other, any of the other things that are now illegal to disturb. So that, that's kind of where, so that, so then I since found, well, first of all, Mike Holland is now no longer the Minister of Natural Resources and Energy, he's been, he's off, he's resigned. And, uh, I think Ted Fleming is now that person. So I've written to everybody, I've written to all of them, asking for public consultations. And I think that that, you know, as, as Hartland, we should be, I mean, now we are in South Knollsville vehemently against this. We didn't start out being vehemently against it, but we are vehemently against it. All the, you couldn't, we have two sets of families that moved into East Knollsville that came from Ontario where a wind farm polluted their waters. They drill down like, you know, they, for each pad that these windmills go on, it is probably twice the size of this room. And to stabilize them, they have to go down fifteen meters of drilling. And that's where all the water, you know, there's a lot of water, water beginnings up there. So, and then, you know, people complain about the noise. But what does J D Irving say in their, in their publications? There will be a limited amount of noise. I mean, who wants to hear? Even if it is limited. And then the other thing that people really complained about with windmills is what they call shadow flicking, which is every time the blade goes round, it gets in the way of the sun. Of course, it goes into shade and then it comes up again and then it goes again into sun. So there's lots of negatives. We are assuming that they want the, we're assuming, because we don't know, nobody's talking, that they want the energy for Deasdale, the, or get Pete Moss place, their, their tree nursery and, uh, and the airport out there. But we, they haven't said where they want it. They want to get carbon credits because carbon credits is the name of the game and carbon credits are huge. And I mean, so, yeah. So, uh, all of these things with the, did I just pop your thing away again? Yeah, so they should be, we're arguing that they should be taking that, so they have to be baseline. They haven't done any baseline studies. So we've had people go up there and walk up there, that they should be taking the baseline from the protected natural areas. There's no sense taking the base land from, you know, desecrated piece of land that they brought up there. They need, these are the old growth testimonials of, at some point in time, it was deemed that these should be protected natural areas. So we're saying to do it there. And we have now started working with First Nations because, uh, yeah, they don't want this windmill either. And they are fighting this, you know, whether, whether we, whatever our feeling or knowledge, which is mine is quite limited about that court case, it is a court case that's before the courts. So we have, you know, many questions that were, would able to be asked if there was someone to talk to. So in the meantime, the only people I've written to, you know, are, are, uh, Richard Bragdon, uh, Hogan, the Fleming, all of them to try to find out. And all, most of them say they don't know a thing about it. So do you know anything about it? I mean, has anybody knocked on your door here?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Yes.
So six weeks ago, approximately, I have, uh, seasonal blowing at one ninety four, Hall and Brook Road.
Oh, yeah.
Not too far from where you're speaking of. And the representative of J D I came and gave me a pair of detail brochure of the convoked wind farm. And I had a number of questions, all of which he answered. Uh, I asked about, uh, public engagement and that is certainly planned and part of the, uh, process that he described to me. Um, I found him to be very well informed and we were approximately thirty to forty minutes in conversation over it. And all of my questions were answered to my satisfaction.
No, why no questions, just that curiosity.
Uh, the noise, the location, uh, access, you know, the proposed, you know, how do you get a new windmill into the woods, that sort of thing? Um, what the power is going to be used for, how much would goes back into the grid? Is there an agreement with MB Power at this point in time, those types of questions?
And so what did they say about the agreement with MB Power?
No, no, no agreements in place yet, but that's something would be the negotiation that they want.
I, I would venture to say, because a couple of people had them come by with these flyers. This is the same flyer that you're talking about, that he gave you?
Uh, that's the one that I've looked at, similar, yeah.
Yeah, it's not hugely detailed, but anyway, uh, it was because we had, uh, not, not me, but a couple of people in East Knollsville had that person come by. And that is their E I A people from Hatch. Hatch is the consulting firm that did the E I A. So we haven't had, unless he absolutely said he was a J D Irving employee.
He did, and he was driving a J D.
Okay, okay, well, that's interesting.
Working at J D I Co.
Oh, well, very official.
We also had him, uh, they were, uh, visited our, uh, fire service and took in all the fire departments from plaster off to dumpsters. And they were there and, uh, gave us a presentation. And, uh, there's probably thirty or forty questions that were sent, given to him. And he answered them all, but probably six to eight and gave it back. And those six to eight were sent by email to us within two, three days after this. So they have been read, but not maybe to weather that show, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I take the lesson, you know, I'm going on Thursday to talk to Quad New Brunswick A G M or, or whatever they're having their meeting. So we are being asked to come out and talk and, uh, I mean, the only thing, I mean, the fact that they've come to the fire, fire department town, now, now nice. You know, that's what they should be, is talking to people and not going, we're buried against with this door to door business. Because all it is, is going door to door from the people, it, it's just salesmanship. It's just they're selling their thing and the people don't know much, but, but the average person doesn't have much information. And then you get a salesman coming to the door and, and it's, that's not public consultation. Anyway, either which way, under the act, that is not public consultation, that is salesmanship. So you did ask for, uh, we've asked for public consultation. And did you get a response? No, nothing. Uh, we asked for public consultation, we've asked MB Power, we've asked Bragdon, Hogan, Fleming, yourselves, you know, everywhere we're asking for a proper, Bob Stokes from Quad New Brunswick, he said what he'd like to see is a big consultation happening at the high school, where people can get a chance to get up and ask questions, have a response, respond back again. Uh, you know, the public consultations have a, a process. I don't know whether he contacted you or, you know, but that's what he told me. Wouldn't it be great if we could have a big public consultation somewhere like the high school, where you get a lot of people in? I don't know what happens. I don't know, you know, he obviously hasn't been successful. But I think, you know, it, it is, it is something that is a huge liability on many, on many levels. Like those blades fling in the winter, fling off ice. I mean, you can, once you, you just Google trouble with windmills. When those blades go around and they put ice on them, they're like flinging them off. So the, uh, none of those A T V trails will be usable. I mean, I suppose there's other places to go, but it's not, and certainly for us living there, we aren't going to allow it. So.
Might not have anything to say about it.
Oh, we'll have a lot to say about it.
There's a challenge with any energy source, though, is that, I lived in Forest Hills in St. John, I don't think you know where that is, but it's not particularly showing from the pipes, it's just not fast from the backyard, you all are the kind of large ones you can see border. So presuming that as a society, we certain amount of energy, we have our choices of nuclear, gas, coal, oil. And so not saying for or against, but I think it's incumbent upon anyone to have a position on any source of energy that, in addition to saying we don't prefer this, we do prefer that. And I think anyone who would say that the bad thing, we don't have on earth a perfect energy source anyway. Right, now in Champlain Heights, we can, my friends who live there, they're right by the road over there. You can talk about and I won't speculate, it causes cancer, dirty air, affects respiratory systems. Right, there's not a single energy source on earth that doesn't have downsides. So if this project does not go forward, what is it replaced with?
A wind farm on agricultural land, obviously, that's.
But wind farms on agricultural land, wind farms rely on something called wind. And they put them where the wind is, they don't put them where cows are in the desert. So there may be some places where.
There may be, there may be places, but in this era of climate change, what you don't do is cut down forests, put up a wind farm. I mean, that, that's totally counterproductive. Here we have a forest, sequestering carbon, doing its thing, helping the planet. What's the point of cutting it all down? And do you know that a wind farm only, by everybody's estimate, only has a twenty to twenty, like twenty to twenty five year lifespan? And then there is no way for those turbines. There is no, you can see pictures in Texas, which has the largest amount of wind farms, and they've got something like two hundred thousand acres of used turbines because they don't fire and raid, they just get jumped. You know, so you have to look at full cost of county, you have to look at the, you know, the, the lot. I know there's a lot of things going on with energy right now, they sold the refinery, they're sold selling their oil and gas. And, you know, so there's, and then we just heard that the nuclear thing is having its hiccups. You know, there's, there's a bunch of things all playing into it, I suppose. But it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense.
I, I think it's, anyway, it's not my place to say.
I can say.
Um, I think when you say it doesn't make any sense, uh, what I would say doesn't make, what I would say doesn't make any sense to have any serious discussion on energy without looking at the sun costs and the sun benefits of all the available options.
Totally agree.
And looking, I would agree, looking at total costs and all those things.
Yeah.
But I think for those who have looked at it, and I'm not advocating for it, I'm merely saying that there isn't a single type of energy we have on planet earth, which doesn't come with huge downsides as well as the upsides. And unless and until people still, as long as people still want to turn on their lights and heat their homes and drive their vehicles, we're going to have to make hard choices about which ones we pick. And so if we want to have an informed discussion about this, by all means, put everything on both sides of the ledger, but don't just put the negatives on any one choice and just focus on those. Focus on the positives and the negatives of all of them and what are feasible, reasonable options for us in this province and anywhere across Canada to pursue. Cause we all know, like, well, it's a hibernian, well, he'll sit, you know, you can look across the country, every type of energy out west. There's legitimate, strong, serious concerns about every one of them. I'm just saying, but there, there is, there is no perfect or near perfect energy source. So every one of them can be compromised and they have to be, and I just, I'm just in favor of having a full discussion about all of them. Many people think there are sacrifices, they need one, every one of them.
That would be a great, uh, that, I think that would be a great thing to host here in Heartland, where we've had a, you know, I mean, I, I was on a family reunion in Holland and there are wind farms and windmills everywhere. Everybody seems to like them. You know, farmers have one windmill, big windmill in their farm, and then they generate all their own, it's a little income park. You know, there, there are farms, but there's also individual, like a municipality will have three windmills, generating income from the municipality, but also feeding back into the grid. So that there are good examples around the world where people seem to be happy with them and they seem to work nicely. But I think it would be, I would welcome that totally to have some expertise of people, you know, discussing it properly. Because I, I actually, you know, I'm having an idea, but I think we do generate a lot of, we have all the energy we need in New Brunswick if we weren't giving it off to the U S.
The first item on our agenda tonight is MB Power rejecting, uh, our asks to have greater control of our waterfront. And the main reason why it's an issue is that there's something called a mattockat beam in the nineteen sixties that permanently altered the water flow to St. John River and ended up flooding this town, many others, and causing all sorts of very long-term consequences. So just as an example, and maybe by small irony, that was because of a choice we made because we collectively knew there was a interest in finding an energy source that we could use. So we dammed our main river, we dammed our main river and what I'm pointing out is that it had, it continues to have to this day, serious long-term consequences.
But why did they refuse your?
Well, we'll talk about that and we'll.
Well, I think there's an environmental piece to it. And I, the concern that I have, and I appreciate you bringing this forward, Gene, is that is a long-term impact to the environment and to the natural surround. And when you remove ninety. And when you remove ninety thousand hectares of forest ground that's in primary for watershed, it, uh, it dries up the smaller lakes and the streams and causes a lack of biodiversity that we need in our environment. So that, this is a huge, a huge impact. I was fortunate in two thousand five to take a helicopter tour from Deersdale to Plaster Rock and see what we have left of the Acadian Forest and the hardwood stands. And you need to know there isn't much. Okay, there isn't much left when it comes down to it in the province of New Brunswick, and we're sitting on it. So to remove ninety thousand acres of it, right, or hectares of it, is, uh, that's quite a chunk gone. Um, that won't come back if you're putting windmills in, because it's going to require sustained removal of that vegetation. And that would make the next question of, are you going to remove that vegetation permanently? Are you going to need to spray in these areas and, and further pollute and damage the environment? So I agree that we may need energy sources, but there may be better locations for it. Um, there's also the impact on sleep patterns and, uh, and how, and what it causes in terms of nausea and so on. The impact it has on migrating birds, all kinds of things. So there's certainly a lot of work to be done. I, I'm just wondering, Gene, what it is that, you know, besides informing the public about this, what is it that you would ask of us as, as a council?
Well, I was asking, I think I did ask Rob already, um, you know, that, that we had a that Heartland, because we are Heartland out there in South Oldsville, you know, that we've had a bit more of a larger front. You know, where people who are going to be affecting down from the Howard Brook people and the snowmobile and the A T V people and the homeowners, like all the way up Skidada Ridge, they're not that pleased about it either. And, you know, could we, I mean, it would seem to me the obvious thing would be for Heartland to host a, uh, you know, a public meeting. And whether you can put it at the school or at the arena or somewhere where, you know, that is the most important thing is that people, I don't think, really know the full, the full impact of this. I mean, we have, in the whole of the Maritimes, we have one percent of the Acadian Forest land. And, you know, who was I talking to? The, some, some woman? Where was she? Oh, yes, at the library. She said, you know, they can see Skidada Ridge when they, when they, when they come up, you know, from, from work. And I think that that, you know, there's a, there's a lot of activity up there. I mean, it's very insulting for Irving's publications to sort of make it sound as if there's nothing between them and Florenceville, Bristol. I mean, hello, Heartland's here. Why did they neglect to put two in the library here? You know, actually, those library people are super supportive and they've had our flyers there and they're distributing them as people come in. But, you know, it's a very slapdash way that they're going about informing anybody of anything. So I would be delighted and I would like to ask that, you know, coming out of this meeting, that we find a way to, you know, have somebody from M B Power here, have, you know, have somebody from Natural Resources. I think if Mike Holland had still been there, he would have come out. He took a, quite a big interest in what was going on last year with A B Lapel, with overcutting, but maple syrup producers are all up there. They're worried about it because that's their, that's their licenses up there. Uh, the Atlantic Salmon, as I said, the Atlantic Salmon Federation people are and to say nothing about the unceded territory aspect of it. So there's lots of, you know, wouldn't be, I, I would be happy to work with somebody here to try to find some expertise. And obviously Irving has all the, their expertise. So it would be good to find people who've known about other wind farms or somebody from First Nations. I mean, yeah.
I could try to set up, you know, facility to public, what I'm putting.
I think we'd be pretty mature and without consulting with J D I, like public engagement has to be part of this process. Have they gotten one by the law? And it's no sense in duplicating.
I don't think they do. Um, I was part of a meeting at, um, the R C in Senegal. And I don't think that they were planning to do that relating, did you get? Okay, um, I don't think that that was part of what they were going to do. They were encouraging people to reach out to the website and send out their questions and to receive answers. Unless since then, they have decided to do so.
Well, it's just like the mining operation in Red Ridge, Dachshund area. Um, you know, they breached the town Woodstock prior to amalgamation. It's been going on for a number of years. They're not yet to the point in their process where they have planned to hold public engagements, nor are they required to at this point in time. But before anything can move forward past a certain point, that definitely has to be part of the process.
Well, I think back about, and I agree with that story, but I do think back about things like the Bank of Nova, Nova Scotia decided to remove, you know, the bank from Heartland. There, when they decided they were going to meet with the citizens and the people that held their money here, that was, a decision was made, the public consultation was after the fact and quote unquote, a courtesy. They had no, there was no turning back the page, and that's a, a trillion dollar corporation from here in South America. So I can't help but think sometimes corporations do have things lined up and they're ducks in a row. And public consultation that sometimes is after the fact with, with no good intention behind it, other than to say we had it. So I've been part of many of those and I, I would be concerned about that happening in this situation.
Well, I'd love it if you, if you guys could, you know, if, if there was somebody on staff that would, I could try to find people who would come and, um, you know, I think we have to be, well, I mean, in all things, one should be proactive, you know, not reactive. And we, we, you know, where we, as the town of Heartland, we can have our own consultation.
I don't think information is bad, so. We can, we can have, so we can reach out and see if we can, you know, arrange something like that. And that would be super, yeah, we'll certainly be in touch and see if there are ways that we can work together.
I wonder if we should reach out to Maris Hill, Frostdale, those areas, because they've, they've been living us, right? As a neighboring community.
I got to contact a guy that looked after the fire service for New Brunswick. And that's what he, and he's part, he done that and all this, like you're speaking, I've heard that. And he'd be the gentleman we need to talk to.
So this gentleman that came and spoke to you, Stuart, he wouldn't be interested in speaking to a larger group?
He was a J D I employee.
People, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
And all things with the, I, I might, might as well use the opportunity to say that the Nozville Art Major Center has been waiting for their proposal to be accepted. Yay, it has been accepted. So we'll be marching on with you. Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
We will move on to item seven point three, which is in regard to the meeting with Minister Austin that did take place today. So we have members from the, um, Police Reform Committee, who were able to travel down to see Minister Austin today. I would say that it was a very positive meeting. Um, it was, it was arranged in response to um, the letter that we received back from them, which basically I think Minister Austin said, not right now. It wasn't, it wasn't a no. Uh, would you agree with that?
Just not really that.
Right, not right now. So, um, I, it, like I said, it was very positive. Minister Austin was very quick to say that he felt that the proposal that was put forward was very, very well done. Um, that, you know, potentially it could serve as a model for other regional municipal forces. That's, that will have done. And they are in the process of looking at, it was specifically R C M P related in.
As specialized services.
Yes.
Regionalizing.
Right. And so they want to, to see what they could look at for provincialized, um, specialized services. So in determining what each area would pay, dependent on their circumstances and, and, um, where they're located within the province and what services we can provide. So, um, they said that until they did their work, they really couldn't give us a standard approval to move forward. So, um, again, it was very positive. I think that we went in, um, feeling that same positive energy and left feeling the very same way.
And he was saying too, that, uh, by looking at what was going on in the province right now, that they would be looking into twenty twenty five, into twenty twenty six. You know, it, it wasn't, it wasn't, they were turning anybody down, anything like that. They needed to do their homework first on their, on their behalf before they would look at some of that kind of shots. So, and which they said it could be in the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six.
I, I do think, I, I think also, um, in looking at the several new families in the province that are considering this, we are at the premise that we, in terms of developing the ball, that we can lead the path. And they'd also talked about, um, potentially on the table, uh, Mr. Austin was going to had talked to Commander Moser Hill about centralizing, uh, the, putting that detachment in our area. Uh, maybe. So that's an action that they were going to follow up on.
Considering our location and a lack of detachment, with closest one being Woodstock, um, it didn't make sense for an area at our size to not have one.
Why did this hit come out in the first?
That question was not proposed or.
And for those, for those listening, by saying our area, we mean the combination of part of the ground. A central, centralized in that area.
So again, it was a, it was a, it was a good, uh, meeting. I think we came away feeling that there is still hope. Um, we're just leaving it in their hands now, uh, to see what they've come up with.
Well, every time we met with the minister, it's been informed that on our behalf to listen to what he's got to say, but also the same for him. You know, but we have a lot of information that is provided to him that he doesn't look at on, on a daily or yearly basis, you know, I mean, our, you know, the police service that we had, the problems that we had. And they, they took notes of some items that we just suggested. And they're going to, you know, go back and, and see if they can do something with it or at least talk to somebody that could correct some of our concerns. So there's, it was, it was really informative on both sides, really.
Would, I'd just quickly say, we also discussed a billing model, the R C billing model, and they're, 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 um, they're part of looking at that now. I did participate in a meeting two weeks ago about that, but, and I think it's fair to say that they're taking our input is on the table and they're very tolerant and other, so that's good.
We'll move on there to item eight, one being the report from C E O, Ralph Loder.
Okay, I won't, I'll just touch on a few items in here and then it's, um, be available for any questions. Uh, one thing that's not in my report that we just found out about is that the province is just, um, released a, uh, uh, releasing an email that, um, talked about our requirement to produce annual port. So I have not had, I'm not prepared to sort of summarize what would be in that, but it's a lot of the standard things. We know the financial results, uh, council attendance at meetings and, uh, but there's also some asset management component in there and a couple of other things. So, uh, like I said, I kind of just barely clipped that email right now. Uh, for our next meeting, I'll, I'll summarize it, but that is a mandate. It's not, not, it's an environment, like, so.
Is this coming from local government?
What's that?
This is a mandate from local government?
It is, yes, yes. Uh, regarding complex, I'll just read through this for the benefit of the listeners, for those who would play this before in the back in the future. Uh, so in the past two weeks, demolition of the old arena was completed in site works to construct driveways and parking lots around the complex had advanced significantly. Uh, on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, foot construction is scheduled, that's tomorrow. And foot construction is scheduled to pour the main ice lab, kind of a big milestone in the, um, construction of the building. Uh, inside the building designs are being finalized to syn- synchronize the audio network and security, uh, designs. And installation of wooder, wooden, uh, bleacher planks and the walking track are set to start in the next several weeks. I think the walking track actually is a little further out. Um, when I wrote this, I was under a misimpression. It's close to the end of August or something, but any of that. And there's just ongoing, uh, work for electrical, um, mechanical plumbing systems. Uh, from budget perspective, this has already sort of been presented, but projects is tracking, you see, the terms like the twelve million. On June tenth, the town submitted formal requests for additional funding to seven hundred and fifty K to Minister Hogan, to Minister Savoy, the regional development board. On June seventeenth, the town applied to the regional development board and care at L C A Bussinger, uh, account representative. We received a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to cover the cost of fire pump installations, which, uh, uh, L C A Bussing had advised those to. And this is because it was not originally scoped, so it more directly got qualified. Um, the fire pump that cost is not in addition to the seven fifty, it's part of the seven fifty. Uh, the town is also seeking additional funding for the demolition, uh, which came in at about a hundred and forty-eight. Uh, in that we made arrangements to Bell Care, just sort of had a process that, uh, request, and we're doing that now. Treasure Pelkey is involved with that. And, uh, as Triple Pelkey and I discussed, uh, if that seven hundred and fifty thousand or some portion thereof does not materialize, it is likely that we would be going back to the M C B B, uh, to borrow more, uh, to cover the differential between the twelve million and whatever the total cost becomes. Uh, and, um, but that's something that isn't, uh, it falls within our timeline, uh, so that's, you know, we can take care of that in upcoming months. It doesn't happen, uh, right away, it must be for some. And, uh, we also continue to engage indigenous stakeholders toward the complex on Monday, April twenty-ninth. Um, so, uh, the person, uh, and now suddenly forgetting, but our marksman, uh, federal from Interchurch Canada, represented who has this file. And L C A Bussing, who, uh, our, our account through R D C, uh, gave me a couple of names to contact, additionally, the ones we already did. They actually put me back in contact with the ones we're already speaking with. So now we're sort of moving towards, um, with those, you know, with our, our distant contacts and, and, uh, you know. Very nice. Um, I'll skip over to, uh, number nine. Um, we had a D T I meeting, uh, last week. And I think it was, it was, we touched on a lot of topics. I'll actually maybe toss over to, uh, our district chair, Deputy Mayor Fairbaird, to comment. But I, I would just characterize the meeting as, it was a, uh, uh, first, I, it should be said, it was very good of them to accommodate a request to meet at night and especially such a nice thing. Uh, but they were very forthcoming with information, uh, very good exchange. We got a number of sort of things to action, airing guardrails, uh, they did destiny highway work, you know, some catching things they do. Um, straps that were.
I agree with the C E O. The meeting was very, very, it went very well. Uh, we had an opportunity to speak directly with, uh, the acting district engineer for our district, Sebastian Ollie. We, uh, we discussed upcoming roadwork and left Sebastian with a number of questions that he had committed to get back with Swift. Answers, so, uh, there was a, and it, nope. His son is graduating this year and just gone through prom, so it was very good for him to take time and scheduling to meet with us, uh, was by Zoom, so I was very encouraged by it and it reiterated the commitment from both the town and from D T I to meet on a later basis and discuss these items. And I would hope that, you know, throughout the fall, we'll have an opportunity to do that again.
And just that one other note is that, uh, some people may not know that the cover bridge and locktalking barrel is the, is responsibility of the province. So the entranceways, the bridge itself, the roof, the picturing structure, et cetera. So that was a topic of discussion, as well as even signage on the bridge and whether we can, uh, you know, economize or, uh, you know, move toward better signage in some areas. And so we discussed that as well.
I think I'm doing a road work on the glass road and that's to Ash King. And that was one of the questions that was brought up. And if they do, uh, D T I works from a number of different budgets and schedules. And as they complete various budgets and schedules, if they are in a surplus, it allows them to grab a chance and do more. It's a very common place, but it's later in the season. And with Kansas Pacific name roads, uh, we don't have that information.
He suggested that people continue following the ticketing system, calling in.
He suggested that people continue following the ticketing system, calling in, putting in a ticket. The more tickets, the more they look at the roads.
Yeah, well, the, the comment here in your, in your report was that, you know, should we produce a report grading our roads according to a, a ticket or, was there a ticket or system reference, Stuart? Or, or was it simply up to us to say, we've got some priority roads that need attention and here's why?
And we have, and that information would then more relevant to D T I had been shared individually. Um, the main focus in our immediate area right now is the completion of the one oh four. Or in the section that is being done as we sit here, uh, completes the one oh four from New York down the line to the J C League. That's been, correctly, it's a long, but at least six years, uh, reaching that day. More is being done by Northern Construction, where the reputation and certainly no strength is to roadwork here in Brunswick.
Question, yes. Well, on item number twenty-one in your report, would you, when that occurs, could you call me? I'd like to be there when that happens.
If they add to cemetery zone, um.
Yeah. I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. On to our president's report, Tina Saffin. It's just a little background to, um, the information that was put into your package, please, for work. Um. Overall, we are trending for us third plus again this year in our general operating. How long do we do though? We are, these are the results for May, so we still have good fortune on the year though. So we will start, um, probably next month, uh, extending our, the numbers, taking a deeper look at what there is that makes the month and projecting forward like we saw towards the end of last year. Uh, water and sewer, right now, if, if, if the trend continues the way it has, uh, we could have a slight deficit in, in water and sewer. Uh, but again, it, uh, biggest thing that is affecting that is that we are down on our, um, metered water reading so far this year, but the trend tends to pick up. Later in the year, there is more water usage when potatoes arrive and they start getting manufactured into other things. So we, at this point, not too large a concern. So under general government, um, overall, we're trending, uh, on the revenue side, we're about forty-two thousand dollars higher. Again, uh, interest on our accounts is, uh, half of that, and the remainder is the E L G funding that we have been able to secure. You'll also see that the E L G funding that comes in as a revenue also contributes to, uh, expenses over budget in certain areas because we are spending the money that we receive. Uh, biggest thing you'll see is for the town hall for maintenance, you'll see some of that in the library for maintenance to the library. Uh, just different things that we are receiving funding for, um. Let's see, the other things that we are saving on expenses side in general government, of course, the police reform costs. So depending on what you find out, we may be putting that back in the budget. Um, legal expenses, membership fees, and our custodial costs. Uh, protective services, uh, again, we know that we are over budget there, particularly in the line item, uh, related to equipment. Uh, we know we had radios for the ladder truck, the port tank, and water replacements, we've talked about those before. Uh, transportation, over, uh, eleven thousand dollars in expenses, and the biggest contributor here is wages. Uh, and we have, uh, we had some part-time staff that got used more than we had budgeted in the part of the year, but that will even itself out as the year progresses. And hopefully we can keep everyone in our public work staff. We've had some, um, problems with health issues, so, um, uh, we wish them well as they go forward. Um. Let's see, environmental health, uh, we're running pretty much on target there, but we are, uh, beyond our first large pickup day. So that was going to be a question mark, how that would actually trend towards our budgets. So, uh, that's good. Economic development expenses are under about twenty thousand dollars. Biggest reason, of course, for that is we had budgeted one of our incentive grants to happen in twenty twenty-four, and that is not going to happen. Uh, recreation and culture, um, we are eleven thousand dollars over our budgeted map for programs. So kudos to the rep department that are, are bringing in, uh, more dollars than we expected. That's always good. Uh, we've received, uh, twelve thousand dollars in funding for the library. And like I said, that's been offset by ten thousand dollars more in expenses than we anticipated. And we had forty-two thousand dollars in grants so far that we have received for recreation. So that explains our overages there. On the cost side, we're only over about fifteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars from budget, uh, into some closing costs for the arena, paint for the ball fields that come in a little bit earlier than I expected, uh, and power are the biggest contributors here. And water and sewer, right now, our revenue is trending over, but, uh, moving forward into June, when our, um, water and sewer bills actually got, or metered water bills actually got issued. That's what we were looking at when we were projecting forward. We have seen some expense savings so far this year, so hopefully those can, 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 can continue throughout the year. Um, and those expense savings are in wages, uh, our water and sewer specialists that we would hope to have for the year. Unfortunately, they is longer with us. Uh, and we've had savings in maintenance, um, and the biggest thing is we've had no emergency breakages there. So that's, that's always good. Uh, I did want to add a little, I've included, uh, all the grants that we had budgeted and we have stayed out so far this year in your report. We'll get into that a little bit later and talk about grants. I did want to add, I added a piece related to complex funding, like C I O Weber had talked about. At the end of the day, uh, what we did is we looked at our budget with a five hundred thousand dollar increase. So to take it from twelve million one sixty to twelve six sixty, and whether or not that would equate to additional borrowing if we do not receive any additional funding, um, through the province. So if you look down through that, basically, at the end of the day, uh, we're trending that we're on target. At this point, like twenty-eight thousand dollars is not, and again, that's anticipating that, uh, no additional funding from, um, our fundraising efforts that we continue to have. Um, we do have some grants that we have applied for through, uh, AgroSpirit and Canada Post, but we won't hear back from them until the fall, and it's assuming we don't get anything further there. But it, it's just to give you an idea that if we go more than five hundred thousand dollars and we don't have additional funding sources for those dollars, we will be into additional life. So that's where that sits at the moment. So if you have any questions, that's important, and thank you. Thank you. On to item eight, three, uh, public works reports with Matthew Baberson.
Wow, we haven't been in months. Good folks, please.
I won't barge you down with any more information tonight, you all have a head to read it. Uh, I'll put some highlights, so, uh, patching and paving, so, uh, patching of all of our, like, some of our main drags has, has been completed. Uh, thanks to Dexter, Dexter for coming in and finishing that up. Uh, water and sewer, hydrogen flushing and sewer loam, flushing will be done here in the next few weeks. Uh, as far as town properties, uh, big thank you to, uh, Sarah Shaw, uh, who soul-handedly took on the beautification committee. She is looking to grow it in the years to come, but this year being her first year, she wanted to be sort of very much involved. And she's done a great job, uh, you'll see a lot more color around town this, uh, last few weeks than with that. Uh, big thanks to her. Uh, the pool, I keep, is an ongoing saga. Uh, we, we have lessened, uh, the loss of water, but we still do have some water loss in, in our pool. Uh, we're currently actively watching and saying, considering on what's going on with pipes and things, but nothing is leaking above parameters, uh. Uh, sorry, the library chimney work, uh, has been completed. So all safety comparisons are now booked after with that, and we're talking well. Uh, maintenance, uh, we have started painting and, and painting up, uh, our pile equipment. And staffing, our custodian, so Stephen Lasky has now been brought on board as a full-time member of the team and will be performing all custodial duties as well as, uh, various maintenance tasks.
How's January?
Well, uh, I want to get through the weeks, here in a public setting, but, uh, he's home doing well and, uh, hopefully we got.
How much is this small now? Is it something where we have to keep running the hose all the time in the pool?
No, uh, we run the hose at, thanks, uh, in context for that, we were, so we were losing eight, ten inches in a twelve-hour span before. We now lose in the eight hours of the daytime running that we are setting holes off, we're losing about that. So.
Something like, no, I did.
Uh, yeah, your, your splash is a thing, evaporation is a thing, plus.
That's certainly true.
Yeah. Well, that's good, uh, to go to another topics. Um, recently I've been contacted by a number of homeowners in different parts of the community that are asking about weeds and grass and things that grow through our sidewalks. And I know in the past they've been sprayed.
So Main Street was sprayed last week, uh, the pump broke on the trailer that we use for that. Um, so we're in repair for that now, and hopefully by the end of this week tonight, depending on whether we'll be back at that.
Have you been on a lot of road with this spray, like from the school down, because that much we'll do there?
Nope, nope. Uh, we did, uh, we did the Main Street sidewalk and we've done the lagoon last year, and we have the lagoon last year.
Congratulations on Flag Street, I know I've heard about it, to some extent, you have asked for us all that, that's a really good job.
So Dexter's came in and entered a, a section of our street, not the whole street, but it was, it was their work section. And as you can read in their report, that took a pal of cold batch over the last winter season. So that shouldn't, uh, offset some of that.
The paper itself.
I want to say that, man, we helped ourselves that. I'm holding it back on that one, thank you for your talk, okay?
Thanks, Chad. I, I would just like to say, on top of the regular standard work that Public Works does, this year, of course, with the complex, they've evolved one to do a lot more. And they've done it in, while dealing with unplanned issues, adjustments and so forth. So I think, uh, anyway, it's worth noting that their work in the last two, three months is very minimal, given all of those challenges that we've gotten through it and we really hit our marks in terms of getting core work done and keeping up with the progress.
So that means by next year this time, the public works, uh, just going to have this town just stick and span because they won't have.
I, you could argue that we already do, and we'll be giving it that way.
We haven't proved incident, I, I would be honest with you, we haven't proved incident.
I hope I'm here by next June.
Thank you, Matthew Baberson. Recreation Report with Mancha Nekro. Step right up, sir.
Evening, everyone. So I'll just tell you a few things here. Uh, Fun Park, obviously, you know, the ocean's going to be at a triple C, uh, starts next week. So the activity list and schedule, like we continue for the kids and leaders, uh, due to the absence of regular pool access that we know we have, uh, we've acquired multiple water sport activities that can use our site, so I'll wait for, uh, fun day for the kids to look forward. Uh, planning increased public sometimes in the pool and, uh, our aqua fit program that we had last year has been changed to more of a general local fitness and almost to encourage more participation. So, um, they turn, we turn a little weather, uh, I'll get to more in Canada there. Uh, I'm receiving calls, that's obviously good, of interest for ice fans and weekly booking, this time slots are filling up, various organizations, and, uh, still we're paying publication of those. Uh, seller registration has continued past the dropping dates, so that's great. Um, people are coming out, tired down, just starting to handle this community list coming back. So, uh, being encouraging to see that participation from everybody. And a little side note here, our recreation team is working on a new Portland sports fest event. The, uh, planned event will be, um, for the end of August, and it's going to be highlighted with a twelve-point-eight-two kilometer run for town. Certainly to be, yeah, it's me too, you know. We'll be the flag in class.
I'll take it, Dofs.
Well, we're already touching on cooperations with the, um, the demolition and the, and the new arena, so we'll get into much into that. Uh, high school swim day, so we're pleased that the kids from the heart of the communities will attend multiple swim days on June eighteenth and nineteenth. It was a great event for everybody involved, and it couldn't have come at a better time than the people that we have. Big thank you to our public works and recreation team, uh, for making these days a possibility. And again, pool is currently open for public, starting with the post-government events to begin, began yesterday. Uh, farmers market's going well, so the part of the farmers market, um, great participation from vendors and customers. Was excited to see our first musical act, Set in the Spirit, as well as our first progress family season, Old Summer Ride in the Area, a little better a couple of weeks ago. Looking to milk theme markets for Canada Day this weekend and Christmas in July, which will be coming up today. Uh, Canada Day, preparations for Canada Day are ongoing, poster scheduled to be shared on social media. Um, our annual mini Olympics and barbecue will be held at the soccer field with afternoon and evening food party to fall. I, uh, we have very day plans as well, but we'll announce if there's any issues that might be there in a while. And the lifeguards now, they're in the pool, so please welcome them, and, uh, we thank them again for their, uh, participation. And, uh, Fun Park staff will be here next week for orientation, actually, the Fun Park staff will be here this week for orientation.
And I'd like to thank John, if I can kick in here, for what he and his wife are doing on that farmers market. It's really, it's coming every week, so I, I appreciate it. I don't know most of the rest, but boy.
Well, possibly, yes, it's a town, the real, the real town.
You're adding to my waistline, that's the problem.
Question, uh.
I had two calls last two weeks about that with the trans. And the question were, are they going to be, you know, maintaining their, I hadn't been to the person this year to, to comment on if they are or they are. The question I want to get back to is, is there a meeting or is there a way that we could contact any of the people that we're all associated with that could say, you know, are they done, are they not done, is this what we have? And who, who, I mean, is that something you can kind of spearhead here?
So to catch on to that, uh, we have a forecast for those people. Um, obviously, as you've been facing recently with, uh, you know, being tied up with the health parks and the setup and so on and so forth. Um, it's still part of the summer schedule, that we want to be able to improve on that maintenance, but it is a good effort, um, with that association. So I can spearhead that and contact them and come up with more of a follow-up plan, and I can provide more information. And I could provide more information.
Well, most of the concerns they had have been jetted out of property because a couple of times it was down on the trail. There's started to be a makeshift tent. Where I suspect some people were staying overnight, so it would leave no place to go. And the issue is, is that there's some people walking down there, get quite frightened by the fact that maybe, you know, maybe a homeless person who, I guess, for the request of maybe we could figure, like, get rid of the remnants of the shelter and make it maybe a field safe area for the public to use. So where the little shelter was and just directly behind the ballfields, it's a little path. If you walk down there about 500 feet, you'll see this little, they tie logs together and then hole, and then there's some park chairs, some debris, old garbage. So maybe if we had a second, we could have a look at that.
Absolutely, we can include it with our, with our team members and something like that. It was like advertising, you know, because it's a nice resort. If there is something so weird, it's for the safety concerns. But I was personally on there last Friday night and it was just, you know, maybe a couple chainsaws and and stuff.
And our little carts? Are we about to have a cart?
Okay. Yeah, go, go, we'll have one.
Anyway, it's just that, and if they need some help, maybe there's a way with the tag. It helps structure a meeting and gain some more volunteers that would want to be part of it. Absolutely. I understand if those volunteers look after that many following trans, it's difficult for just maybe we need to promote that, decide it's the next meeting and come up and help.
Well, I've sent us previous meetings and I'm referring to it, it's, you know, it's, it's a draw for our, for our town and municipality. And we got to actually get it back in shape, so, yeah. All good. You're welcome.
Thank you. There is a report here from the fire chief. Just to acknowledge that, anybody having questions.
What was the exposure?
I had that a little while ago. The R C O P themselves were half the time to it. And there was a person taking him to the hospital, and I would knock, I saw him, you know.
You should use your mouth, right? I prefer that.
Okay. And group, our next report will be our Communications and Development officials. Michelle.
Evening, Council. Some of the things, so you'll see in my report on your social media, I mentioned that I was working with a, someone to try to get us access to the Heartland Forest Bureau's Facebook page again. And I was able to get that resolved today. So we now have access to it, and I've given access to the manager at the Visitor Information Center as well. And I see she's done a post already this afternoon on that. So if you're on Facebook, make sure you follow Heartland Forest Bureau and Gift Shop so that you can like and react with their page to help that Facebook algorithm. We did, following the public engagement session for the waterfront revitalization project, River Valley Sun did a great article as well, the Telegraph Journal. I didn't see the Telegraphs, but I know someone had told me that they had seen that one as well. So we did get some coverage there. Also, I submit monthly the events and announcements to River Valley Sun. So for their June 15th to July 14th newspaper, I had submitted, let's see, some examples of the items that were provided for that edition. And regarding the website, we are just waiting for our branding to be finalized. Well, it's somewhat finalized, but we have to get all the files, all of the digital files and the guidelines and those sorts of things. And we're expected to have those by the end of this week. So I should be able to forward that on for website people and give them the heads up on that so that they could try to have somebody available to start the ball rolling on it. And I've made them aware that our photographer isn't coming till that first weekend in August. But they said it's fine, they can still do everything else and then drop the pictures in afterwards. So we are getting the ball rolling on that. I've provided council with a copy of the newsletter that was actually sent to the printing company today. And it's a few days behind schedule again, waiting for those logo files so that we could finalize that front page article on our new logo and tagline. So I am still hoping to be able to get that to Canada Post next week so that they can get that out. I've also made note in my report that Canada Post have changed their, their contribution system. And so we have to either take a whole route or no route. And because the outlying areas were crossed, where the main roads cross into another municipality, it just didn't make sense to provide them with enough newsletters to cover the entire route if there was only 10% of the homes in it that were in Heartland, for example. So we will be making copies available here at the town office if people want to have copies. And they will also be available digitally on our website as well. For grants and funding, so I applied for another about $130,000 of potentially eligible items. So we will see how that turns out. It will be probably the end of August before we appear on those, but I'll be at 80% coverage if we get approval. I reached out to the Federal, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, the FCM. They had announced a funding stream that looks like we could use it for warming and cooling centers, so generators, that sort of thing. But after speaking with the representative at FCM, he said that we weren't implementation ready yet. We've really got to go through the feasibility stage first. And so that funding stream isn't expected to open until September. So we'll have more information on that at that point. So I, I'll keep an eye on that. There may be some other things we can apply for in that same, you know, not just warming and cooling centers, there may be some other things there as well. But we'll wait until that, the feasibility funding is announced to determine that. The Federal Housing Accelerator Top-Up Fund, so if the federal government had announced that from a month ago now, but they still haven't made the application available, they haven't given more information. But the folks at Fairview Consulting are saying that they're hearing that it should be anytime. So they're getting an agreement ready for us to sign so that we can, so that they can gather information from us and we can, you know, get the ball rolling, because we sometimes don't have a whole lot of time on those once they're announced. And under Planning and Development, so there were actually nine building and development permits issued in the month of May totaling about $1.3 million of construction value. So the year-to-date construction value as of the end of May was about $2.7 million. And there is some construction and site work that's happening in the Allright Court area. And so we're expecting that those will probably appear in, when we're provided the June permit numbers from the Regional Service Commission. Also, there was a developer who had presented to council in a closed session several months ago that was interested in a multi-unit residential housing development between Clark and Focker and Streets. So he contacted me and said he's opted out of that project. And then the property owner got in touch with me, and he said he would be open to working with other developers. So I did send an email out to see if any of our local developers are interested in something there. I haven't heard anything, but if council knows of someone, I can certainly forward that email along to you. And then under Tourism, I've received some Western New Brunswick birding bird fours from Nature New Brunswick. And I've provided those to the Visitor Information Center. So it was for the entire Western New Brunswick region, and it included the Becca Gilmcneat Trail, Charles Allen Park, and the Nellsville Arts and Nature Center. And so those were three trails out of 11 on there. So there was some really great coverage in Heartland. So that'll be something good that they can hand out at the Information Center. And there's been a group on Facebook that reported that a replica of the front facade of the Heartland Cover Bridge was erected at the Pavilion Park by a Heartland Community School student as part of their school assignment to make something for the community. So it is being used for a photo op backdrop. And I've notified Dan Glenn so that he could include it in his site plan if we're able to move forward with anything at the Pavilion Park, just in case there's a a more ideal location or perfect vantage point or something for that. So he's been notified of that. And actually, as a side note, I was down there getting some pictures this afternoon, and some tourists came through, and so I pointed it out to them. They hadn't noticed it, but I noticed when I was leaving, they were out by it getting their, their picture taken in that opening. So that's great to see that being used. And I should say thank you to that student. So it was Calvin McCattan, I understand, was the student that was involved in that. So that was great that he did something for the community like that. It's good seeing it being used. And I mentioned earlier, the photographers are coming August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd to take community photos throughout the municipality. So that is one of those things that was covered by the environment and local governance funding that we received at the 80% level. So I'll work, I'm working with them to determine an itinerary of the shop lists so they can be ready to hit the ground when they get here. And we do have the final logo. So they, I've just shown the logo mark in here. The final guiding from them, guiding lines from them will include vertical and horizontal options of it. And you can see the horizontal version on the front of the newsletter that I distributed this love. And that's everything for me. Was there any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to give a big thanks to each department's manager, treasurer, and C A O for the work you do. I don't know how you fit it in a day. Your reports are always very well played, and we appreciate the work that you do. So thank you very much, to you and every one of you. Okay, we'll move on to.
The guidance.
I have a note, regular business. So 9-1 is in regard to an N B Power request that we have made. And we did receive a letter back from them, which I will read to you. So it's addressed to Mr. Webber. We have reviewed your inquiry to complete work on N B Power properties, including removing vegetation and developing a portion of the property for recreational purposes. As you know, N B Power works with municipalities and other third parties to facilitate the development and use of its lands where such development and use would not interfere with operational requirements of N B Power or damage or impact the N B Power lands detrimentally. In this instance, concerns exist with respect to alterations of these lands which are located within a flood zone for operational requirements, and in order to mitigate erosion to the lands, the vegetation should remain intact with no alteration. We understand that this is not the desired response, however, for those reasons provided, we trust that you understand N B Power's position. Regards, N B Power Corporation, Lindy McFlyer.
So that day, after consulting with Deputy Mayor and Mayor, we wrote a following letter in dress of to Mayor Brown, our representative of the N B Power. Hi, Mayor, as anticipated, we are very disappointed with N B Power's decision and are not resigned to accept it. For your information, we plan to appeal N B Power's decision to our local M L A Minister of Education and Early Childhood Development, Phil Hogan, Minister of Natural Redemption and Development, Hugh Fleming. We also plan to discuss your letter and decision at our next public meeting of council, which will take place on Tuesday, June 25th at 6:30. By making this decision, N B Power has taken a position in its own interests that dismisses and disregards the interests of Heartland's 4,000 residents to develop their water. A strategic initiative the council and community both strongly support, an initiative that is fundamental for civic economics and recreational lives. Moreover, Heartland is confident that the concerns N B Power has raised can be fully addressed and resolved through effective design and planning, as they have been in numerous waterfront projects across New Brunswick, including several in the St. John River. We would respectfully ask N B Power to reconsider its decision and to engage Heartland to identify adjustments to our proposed development that would satisfy the interests of all parties. There's been no response. That same day, later that day, we sent this email to Minister Hogan. Minister Hogan, this morning, we received a letter enclosed from N B Power stating that they had denied our request to use their land for our proposed waterfront development. To our knowledge, N B Power staff and senior management reached their decision without speaking to our designer, Daniel Glenn, or anyone else from the town involved in the project. We strongly believe that their concerns can be fully addressed through design and planning, as they have been in numerous waterfront projects across New Brunswick. As you would understand, the proposed development has very strong support from the entire, from the entire Heartland community, from our residents to our companies to our council. To further address this matter, we ask to meet with you and Minister Fleming in person. We will travel to Frederick to do so. Thank you for your attention to this matter, great informant to Heartland. We look forward to receiving your support and direction. Have not heard from Minister Hogan yet on this.
That's where we stand currently.
You suppose seeing the encouragement from the other departments that were here are helping house setting back about six months ago, when we gave the tour and the department officials were here and tourism were here, our senior. Do you suppose that a note we sent to all those department heads, maybe asking them to chime in with a letter of our support? To kind of get multiple government agencies kind of looking at this on their behalf? You going to speak about that?
So I did reach out to R D C and Apollo because they're the two funding agencies that we've been working with on it. And I did get a reply from R D C, he's going to make some inquiries. But to, to further the conversation on this, and to make it clear, N B Power were never provided our plan. They were never provided any documentation. The task was to have a 15-minute conversation from the Glenn Group so that they can get, so that he can get some feedback from them. So they had no information on this project whatsoever, other than who has to have a 15-minute conversation. But just so it's clear, they have no idea what the scope is of this project.
I'm encouraged to see a number of the media here. Well, perhaps that comment in itself should be, you know, related to public, that all we're asking is an information session with N B Power. And yet, in return, we get a letter stating that they're not only not allowing us to do something that they don't know we want to do, but it seems that they're reluctant to allow me to do that. So I just find fair and acceptable.
And let me take a look to Dan Glenn of the Glenn Group, once we received this. I forwarded it to him because I thought maybe he had a phone conversation with somebody at N B Power. And he said, no, the only thing he had was he sent the email that said, Rob Webber, C A O of Heartland, asked me to contact you regarding the planning of the Heartland Riverfront to discuss use of land going forward. We have just completed the public engagement process, and we are anxious to complete a feasibility study to assist funders in investing in the refresh of the riverfront. Can you provide contact info and a time for a 15-minute chat? So as far as we know, that's the extent of the information they had on our project, which as you can see, it was, it was nothing, you know. So the next thing, depending on the outcome of this and any feedback on R D C or Apollo, I've already got an email drafted to all of those folks that we met with back in October, I think it was. And with the reply from N B Power attached, just to bring them up to speed and honestly, in hopes that maybe they can help log me on our path. But like I said, that email's drafted, I just happened to hit the send button because I wanted to see if there's any feedback from R D C or Apollo or Mr. Holden about that.
My opinion, I'd send it. Thank you, Josh.
We'll move on to item 92, T and B announces. We'll move on to item nine two, G and B announces C C B S funding for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight.
So uh, this past Friday, uh, the province uh, through uh, announces five year um, C C B F uh, funding uh, formerly most People still refer to it as the gap that company. Uh, which comes down from several governments, the province uh, for all municipalities. So uh, in the uh, agenda, you can see uh, what I did there. I, I put in what the annual allocation is, that's straight ahead of um, Report, they have all the municipalities listed and whatever it gets over that five year period from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight. And just so you could see um, in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, it increases Um, by about seventy seven hundred dollars, which is sort of about four percent. It freezes and does not increase in twenty twenty six. It goes up another four percent in twenty twenty seven and then again freezes. So it only is increased to uh, well, not counting first year, two of the remaining four years and uh, pretty By pretty small amounts. So, and what I did, um, I, I think I sent the council, the report came from the province. So you can see um, all of the municipalities listed, but when you look at municipalities Comparable to Heartland in terms of population. Uh, you'll see and I, I believe uh, in saying this, uh, there is no town our size that gets less per cap, per capita basis than Heartland does. Uh, so you can see uh, it ranges from forty nine thirty three a person, Heartland To uh, sixty eight, sixty nine a person, uh, Boy Jovi. Um, and whose population uh, exceeds ours by five feet.
So has there been a letter? That has been out or sent out to show our concern of exactly those stats that you just are presenting here? To somebody that will have to answer to why there would be a difference of this nature?
Well, we have not. Uh, but one of the things is it's not clear. I assume, well, we can assume. Uh, it, it, obviously the funding they provide is not strictly based on, on population. It must also be tax based and There's some formula that they use here. And while they produced materials earlier, um, along with that correspondence, there was never any explanation of how Uh, they arrived at those figures. So that's one of the reasons. Uh, so we are going to try and find information out and then it'll make it for a more informed response.
At least uh, these provincial formulas uh, that have been used in numerous things involving the town of Heartland. Uh, we get The one of the better word chapped at every time, don't we?
Well, it's not equalization, leasing costs. And this gas pension.
We, we talked about that today. It's, it's all because the formulas are all based on tax assessment. So If you start with core equalis, uh, core funding equalization and focus on equalization for just a moment. Uh, the whole point of core funding equalization is, is to redress or uh, normalize differentials in tax assessment. So that one program is supposed to get everyone up on a level playing field. But then they continue to use tax assessment on R C and P, which is one quarter of our budget. And they continue to use it factored into this, which provides critical capital funding for roads, water, sewer infrastructure, et cetera. And what we actually talked about today, in which uh, the minister was receptive with, but of course, they're only looking at from the R C and P angle today, is that There should at least be some consideration to making that formula based on something which more closely approximates a municipality's wealth. Which would take into account their debt, uh, their savings and not just their income. And the metaphor I've, I've used, I think I made with council and I've used with them Is that if one person was making a hundred thousand dollars a year, but had No money in the bank for savings, another person was making Uh, you know, fifty thousand a year, but had a million dollars in the bank, no one would consider the first person quarrel with the second. Right? So when you look at the access, the ins, the savings, the debt, et cetera, that um, towns have. Um, you know, the formula would be different. The other thing is, and what we've explained is that um, our tax assessment is high because we have a good Um, industrial base, but that industrial base is not free. Right? We pay, our old Dutch uses a nice amount of water. Not a bad thing, but we have to provide the infrastructure to support that. Uh, we have a lot of eighteen wheel trucks and a lot of industrial machinery driving on our roads, which makes our roads deteriorate more faster than they might in, say, In top, where you don't see that kind of traffic. So we pay more uh, to have that industrial base and that's not factored in it anyway Into their formulas that just simply take tax assessment. So I think it's like fundamentally flawed in the way they um, in the way those things are calculated. And this is one more example of uh, I won't bore your word chapped it, but where we are disadvantaged Uh, by only looking at tax assessment on the other basis upon which to decide uh, what provincial funding that municipalities receive.
I'd rather be the guy who's making fifty thousand dollars a year with a million bucks in the bank.
So if this is correct, it's going up of roughly two percent per year?
Yes.
They're gonna do the same thing with housing assessments? Keep that two percent in here? Uh, hey, I.
Any other questions? Okay, item nine three, bylaw development.
So you should all have a copy and you'll want to refer to it. I worked on this with Trevor Pelkey and others and it's uh, There's a few things before I start just going through the particulars here. Uh, this is a graph. Uh, we'll intend to post it just for public reference, uh, you know, uh, heading into our next meeting, which Um, depending on your, your perception today, we may or may not look to have a first reading. Um, I took, I borrowed heavily, uh, you can say plagiarized from uh, Fredericton, Monson, Sussex, mainly Fredericton. Taking this, that is why a couple of things here may be a bit odd and may in fact be better off just to remove from it. Yeah, it may not fit us as well, which we'll talk about. Um, it is interesting to know that um, when you look at other towns, uh, unlike most of the other bylaws and policies we've worked on, A lot of towns do not have a bylaw to cover this. So um, they rely on their contract, they establish it, they have a private collector For other things. Uh, so but this area, and if we look in our own area, I don't believe there's a bylaw in Carleton County Or any town right now on waste collection and disposal. But uh, the reason to have one is that it has been a contentious issue. Uh, when we talk about, for example, apartment owners Who uh, some may feel that the rules are either not clear defined or not applied universally in some sort of clear Uh, fair way and that there are exceptions made. So this is an attempt to sort of address that. And uh, so now I'll sort of go through some of the things to uh, look at in the bylaws. So starting in the definition section, really, you can go all the way down to the key definitions in uh, O and P. Um, type A residential property and type B residential property. So all the distinctions here are, are one of the key, sorry, not distinction, one of the key elements to try and define here for the purposes of defining the law Is when do you have to have a dumpster? What thing do you define or say? Uh, what, what, what set of rules do you have? Is it based on Uh, well, here we'll see, uh, we look for an access. Uh, based on, yeah, obviously the number of units, uh, the types of units, uh, whether they share or have individual driveways. If they're one P A D or there's a clump of them or P I Ds are irrelevant, then it's merely a matter of access. So what I've defined here, and I'll go back over is after batting this back and forth and then What, what I, what I ended up with here is that type A residential property refers to One, any residential property in which four or more well used access a public road or street through one Private road, driveway or vehicle entrance, or Two, a single room, rooming house with nine or more rooms. Um, and then type B is simply, instead of being four or fewer, it's five or more. So if we can look and take any example we have If, and look um, to go ahead and point toward actual examples. Um, if we think of the apartment buildings behind Tim Hortons, they have one access and they have more than five units. We think of um, the tiny houses there. They each have their own driveways. They'd be type A. Ones behind Tim Hortons would be type B, cause six or more. The ones down at Mullen would be type B, but they have six or four, I'm saying, I'm saying six or more, it should be saying five or more. Uh, and the ones in Beckett, same things on one driveway, they have six or more. So therefore The, then those definitions, that sort of clarifies, you can take any apartment Kind of house to run on, apply those and figure out whether they're A or B. And then later on in the uh, in the, in the bylaw, in sections four and five, you have the rules. So basically, a type A residential property Uh, shall provide on the premise, one or more garbage receptacles, and by that we mean cans or bins, the traditional What, you know, individual people, individual homes have, that are in number and size sufficient to contain the total garbage produced each week By all residents of the property. And then the second part B just says they should be allowed for safe and convenient access for the garbage collector. Basically, if they're just with a little more curd each. Um, five, if you're type B Uh, then um, still have to provide convenient, safe access. Still have to have enough of them, whether it's one dumpster, three, or it's a larger dumpster, smaller dumpster, whatever it is, but has to be enough to carry To cover the garbage collected by those using it. And, but the key distinction is uh, in C. Um, they'll be responsible to pay to purchase or rent the dumpsters from the garbage collector. And the uh, owner of the uh, type B residential property shall be responsible to pay all recurring collection and disposal fees. So that's a point that began, uh, I won't say contention, but when you talk about this, uh, the thing you would always, uh, People would always say is, do we pay for collection, disposal or both? And in some towns, you see them pay for collection and not disposal and so forth. Um, we have always uh, been collection and disposal here in Heartland. It's actually, uh, you could say, uh, what others have recommended too, is including even the garbage collector Is that it's the right arrangement, but it is, um, you can say it's not identical to At least one neighboring uh, community, but you can look around the whole province and you can see Every flavor, every variety, it's how that arrangement is done. So it's just a, it's a decision. And, and it's important. Within inside Heartland, it's been this way. So the other thing of this, of course, is that by establishing this rule, which clarifies, you know, you could, anyone can read this and figure out if they're A or B. Um, this also applies, of course, to not just Old Heartland, where the issue is sort of been more prevalent or has been come more to the fore. But it's for, you know, places in Somerville that we know and all over. So you can do their place. So that's really one of the key Parts of it, but I'll go back through some of the other elements. Um, well, I shouldn't say it's a key part, it's just a part that I think a lot of people Look at first, or it's on the attention. So Uh, if you look at section, um, sorry, three, H and I. Um, that was very much put in, uh, it's, it's sort of uh, long-winded, but basically it's just an anti-raven thing. So it means that if you put up your garbage and your garbage gets uh, attacked by ravens Or bears or whatever, whoever might go at the garbage, uh, you have to go and clean it up and put it back in the bin. And if it like, so I say here that If any garbage escaped, scattered, spilled out or spread out from bags or containers onto the originating property or, or neighboring property. That means on the property, originating property or neighboring property. The person responsible for the uncollected and uncontained garbage shall place it in an approved receptacle within twenty four hours. So your twenty four hours to clean it up. And take all reasonable measures to restore the state and appearance of their own property, as well as the affected neighboring properties, to make it back the way it was before the spill. You know, which, so that is there. And then Basically, we have two of those clauses because one is for regular garbage, if you will, and one is for recycled uh, material. So it's by identical verbiage, it just covers both scenarios. Um, the next section, I'll go to section six. I don't, this is one of those ones I have a question mark here. This may not really apply to it. It was in Fredericton's bylaw. Um, the thing is, the difference there is if Fredericton has a separate collection process for this type of material, we do not. So our yard waste, and this is pointed out by Trevor Pelkey, but our yard waste just goes right in with everything else. So there's no distinction yet. So it, in some point in future, if there is, then perhaps as applicable, it may be, it does sort of provide advice on what you're supposed to do with leaves and brush and branches. That may be useful thing. Um, you know, even when it goes into regular, um, you know, collection, but Any event, uh, it's there.
Okay, just sorry.
Yeah, well, go ahead.
Uh, the, the pieces about the sizes of branches and brush, that is in our collection.
Okay.
Big question. Maybe I'm speaking on the turn here. Uh, I had the privilege of going up to the, the meeting in Central with y'all and y'all. Uh, and uh, basically what they talked about at that meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong. The problem is, is some of this might be premature Uh, or maybe have to be amended if this goes through Because the province is talking about changing things around a little bit, am I right? And as far as
What, what I would say is
Garbage is concerned?
Just to pick one part of that. I, I wouldn't characterize this premature in the sense it would reflect to here and now. But yes, if there are changes of that sort in the future, it will have to be amended for this. Because we will get pretty good advance notice about what those are. That won't happen overnight. That'll be part of the process.
They're gonna go to more than one bin, or maybe three bins. For different kinds of, we're gonna be separating our garbage into all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, and I also think i- i- it's potentially useful to establishing rules and standards now, prior to that. Uh, so that we can normalize some of the expectations and the rules around garbage collection before. Now, if those changes take place, then we adjust what we, you know, people are already used to structure around it. And maybe we'll just adjust it and adapt to whatever the new rules are.
I was gonna say, Rob, with number six, it seems that probably most of what's listed there is probably being done Most carpentry are using their leaves and so on for compost areas or perhaps A small branch debris they're using in their fire pits. Don't know that. How many?
That's, that's the item that the province is gonna go to is compost stuff. It's gonna be, have to be separated into different bins and the garbage will be recycled.
Okay.
Oh, that's, that's why there's gonna be two to three bins for.
Well, and again, it's still in the, in the planning and stakers.
Yeah. So it's, it's gonna come to that.
But I, I'm, I don't know if number six would, would land well with many of our citizens.
There's that on three as well.
No, but, but I mean, six for sure. I don't really see impacting Many people unless it's kind of quote unquote in town, in town proper. I don't know.
I had the privilege to talk into one of the veterans at that night, at that meeting, and, and we, we got talking about how things are done in Nova Scotia. And I'm telling you, you, you really gotta put The item in the proper bin down there, or you In the, in the essence, could be penalized for it. You put a teabag in the wrong bin. And that is, and he said, that's essentially that's what's gonna happen here. And it's obviously just the way it's done in Nova Scotia. And uh, and they're very
New Brunswick is way behind, shamefully way behind in how we treat our waste. Um, but we have lots of improvements that we can make, so.
And I would just, I mean, not to uh, um, pick a point here, but just that uh, the items in three, yes, there's a couple there that Um, you and one could uh, debate, but it is true that those are what you find in the bylaws that do exist on this, for some variation. They're all addressed in, is what I'd say, if you look at Fredericton and Sussex, so.
Don't get me wrong, just a little bit of time. Yes, we gotta have it.
And just to conclude, um, I, I have special garbage collection, uh, and disposal. Uh, there again, uh, ashes, incombustible materials, street rubbish, uh, shall not be placed for collection in garbage. Yard waste, and should be disposed of by the owner of the building's friends, so you have to not put that near. So it just adds some, yeah, I mean, some important details that ran, I think. Um, there's rules around what you can, can't put in regular garbage and uh, That point B, um, we've already had uh, some upset from uh, residents about Not being able to put uh, construction material, windows and the like out in, in on garbage. But that, that's important to note, that is a uh, That's stipulation of a contract with J S Palace. So it's not something a town has an option at this point to sort of Instead of going back and reopening that and negotiating it, which would almost certainly be Um, result in some sort of added expenditure or cost. Uh, and household furnishings, uh, shelling, wood, out of large item pickup days and that kind of thing. So Um, the D is a little less, the chute um, is one that was, I think, listed off of Fredericton, which may be less applicable to us. And the uh, the recycling is, is pretty standard stuff as well.
They're not gonna be able to stop people from going out the night before big garbage pickup day, going through people's stuff, so it's kind of
And one, one thing that uh, Uh, I'll just know, I mean, the panel was in enforcement, we talked about this, and uh, Trevor Pelkey and I, about how much to find. So we ended up at one hundred dollars, um, not more than five hundred, but it is instructive to notice like we Um, Fire Chief and I, along with two police officers, did visit one residence. And half of the issue was garbage. Uh, because the garbage for weeks has been strewn across, not just the, the originating property, but Neighboring properties. We've had several calls in here. I feel that I feel that multiple calls, a couple visits, emails and the like. So there's a real cost and time and trouble, if you will, to this issue. And therefore, on that basis, it defines actually somewhat modest, so I guess the point where we would, I mean, there'd be a process where you would give your warning, maybe a letter, a fine, a visit, and that kind of thing. But just to say it's not a crime that doesn't have a cost to it from an administrative or a municipal perspective. It can be quite, quite, quite on, you know, to try and resolve. And it's one of those things like streets that residents care a lot about. So you know, if you have, if you're next to a property with a lot of then, you know, your, your value, your home and all the sort of things affecting.
We shouldn't see the level of garbage we see and the size of our ditches and candy. And there's a lot of it. There is a lot of it. There's more thrown out than there has been the last five years.
My road especially. Coming in from Rockland into Heartland is terrible. So are there any thoughts from council regarding the A versus B and that definition using that as the, as the construct on which to base the dumpster rules, essentially the form of dumpster.
Like that, no, I believe you're reading that.
What I encourage you to do in that is actually, and what I, at least what we tried to do, and we, we discussed it internally, and I won't say we were all of one mind. Cause it's inherently kind of tricky actually to figure out on what basis you're gonna choose, but the idea was you try to establish a rule that you could look at any property, one of the tests of the rules, if you can look at it and figure out what, whether it's clearly A or B. And I think this actually, from my standpoint, does accomplish that without adding a transmat complexity. Cause you'll be, a number of houses share one, you know, one truck privately in a public road. You know, whether it's a driveway or private road or et cetera. And that's, you can look at any property and say, oh, that's an A enough to be by, with that rule. So anyway, not to give myself credit for having, but just simply saying it's a useful, I think it's an easy construct to apply.
Question. A type B, you're stating in there that if they have over five apartments.
Five or more.
Five or more. They have to have a dumpster. They can't go to an individual bin for each apartment?
Correct. But by that, for definition for clarity again, Backwimmick would be type B. McMullough would be type B. And so too would be apartments behind Kim Orton. So too would be the ones in Somerville. Both the new and the older one on Somerville Road, those names, they'd all be type B. Just to put in that context, I'm thinking of some of the type B properties that we could speak of in our neighboring community of Woodstock. I can think of several properties down there with multiple dwellings. Fifteen, twenty, twenty-five units that use a centrally located storage bins, area for storage bins, right? Like they may have eight or 10 storage bins behind a wooden structure. And all the residents use those. And they're put out weekly by, by assume a caretaker, right? Would move them out where they could be accessed by the, for garbage collection. But there are no dumpsters for any of those apartments. The ones behind Soames, for example. There are no dumpsters.
This is another thing that we've found out that at this meeting is, is, is Heartland, Woodstock, Forestville, Bristol. We all have individual contracts and they're all different. So, and as Rob was saying, Woodstock, as far as you know, and Forestville Bristol don't have any bylaws pertaining to garbage at all. So we're the first ones coming in with this. But down there, they, they have a contract with Bellis. It's, it's completely different than the contract we have with Bellis. And different things are done different ways down in Woodstock and there are different ways up in Forestville Bristol.
Well, I get that. I'm just wondering about the necessity to have a dumpster versus.
If you have something that's. An all-new construction. Where exactly do you?
Go dumpster.
Off the dumpster.
And if I may, for information purposes, when Mayor DeMerton and I went to the second meeting related to this topic, we had, cause we had Woodstock, District Department of North and us all in the same room. So we asked them specifically. Because we have you all in the same room, we would like to have a discussion on what your thoughts are in relation to the issue we were having with consistency. That was the biggest word that was used by one of our residents and very well put. And they're all on the same page is what they indicated to Mayor DeMerton and I, that they, they would like to follow the same pattern. So that's what we're getting from our neighbors.
Well, the only other question I have is the, the financial impact for anybody who has multiple unit dwellings, you know, if you're B versus an A. Is there an additional cost for the dumpster versus the tipping carts that are being used in the small? Is there, is there gonna be a financial increase, I guess, on, on the business almost?
Well, the big, and I'm, I'm talking about this, is the thing about a dumpster is, is the owner of the apartments, and I don't, I suppose he could defer this to his people that live in the apartments, but he, but he has to pay the weight.
But it's in the dumpster.
And how's he gonna keep people from the community to put stuff in that dumpster?
Well, that's, 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 you have to say that, but that would be illegal and the person would be.
If you have the individual bins for each apartment, the owner of the apartment building is not paying the way.
If you start putting dumpsters all through Heartland, people are gonna start coming and putting things in said dumpsters. Yeah, absolutely.
We have just two that. We need to have a law that wants to be renewed. Problem. And notes, it's very simple, basically the law.
Yeah, but if you're using an apartment building, each person's gotta have a key to that law. Right? I guess it could be the same as there. Anyways, that's something work out. That's something.
I know for a fact that there's people in Simon that are bringing their garbage down in a dumpster here.
Absolutely. What, what, I mean, one element of this, I think, consider is that again, it's based on if there's numbered dwellings to share common single, share one access to a public road. At some point, whether five is the magic number, eight, forty, you can imagine, you would not want X number individual garbage cans at the end of the road. Right? So at least with this rule, it seems that one could narrow the focus to saying, what is that number? It would become a public hazard, public nuisance, could obstruct driveway, you know, and that the garbage collection company might object to. We start to have problems with. I mean, you literally have a single driveway, it doesn't flow so many at a time. So it's, it's really, it it seems that the number becomes the.
Did on this, or throughout the year of different times. Everything I came across said that the assumed number has always been four. The maximum number is four. And that is through our contract and in other areas of the province too, if I recall correctly.
And here's the thing that I forgot too. This is the bylaw for the new heart. This isn't for the old heart. I get it. So this bylaw is gonna take in Simons and Coal Street and Cloverdale and Waterville and all of them. And it's all gonna be the same.
I think it does require a little more review. I think if we had a chance to really dive into it and look at it, it's, you know, certainly a great starting point. It's probably, it's all encompassing, but as you discuss things and, and talk them through, you realize that there are some things that need to be.
It's like our campfire just got.
So we should do a deep dumpster dive on.
Deep dumpster dive, yes, yes.
Well, you, you actually, you alluded to it.
We're heading with this and this will come back to council, right?
I think, that's good work.
Yeah, we need something to place before, absolutely.
Before we move on to the next item, could we please adjust that cold air?
What? I'm freezing. I am too. And I run hot, just so we're clear. I don't get cold very often, but I'm, you know. My lower back, my lower back tightening, my body shaking.
Why I have to turn because it's blowing the air. It's like, how did you notice me do that?
That's why I stay on this show table. Nothing over there.
Well, we wouldn't want you to catch cold, mate. Can't have you down at home.
Not an emotion.
Please. Thank you.
Seventy-two will do it. You're gonna have to throw a couple more up there. We're gonna change the pants next time.
Item nine four, we'll move on to twenty, twenty-four work on Pavilion Park in downtown.
This was, this was just me adding an item to the agenda for allow council to discuss if they would wish to entertain, because we kind of casually or at certain times talked about naming the park, having a grand opening, doing certain other things with respect to the park. As well as the downtown, sort of a look at the sidewalk curb. I know, and I think specialists, hopefully specialists there would tell you that we, you know, look, we're hoping and planning that at some point we'll have approval to move forward with the downtown water pump project and that if we spend the money later, after it's funded, we would get, you know, we stand to get sixty, seventy, eighty percent back. But you know, that, that does likely mean currently where we are, that, you know, you would not do much in twenty, twenty twenty-four. There are other factors, like if we, you know, Pavilion Park, we raise credit donations. Just like with our arena, maybe somebody wants to come forward and make a donation that would be tied to naming the park and those sorts of things. But in any event, the questions you're sort of left with is this year, seems like we have a very, what is a fast-growing and evolving market in Saturdays. We could add concerts and things to this sort later in the summer and the fall. The park will be used for Big Bridge Fest. So there are both several opportunities to sort of have something like a grand opening or launch, or to have a name when there'll be lots of public attention and patronage of swings areas. And so what, what is council's thought on what we might do this year? To, to, on the downtown and the park?
My thinking about, you know, set council this guy is I don't feel we should worry about naming a park, but we don't have a hundred percent commitment to what the park should be. Versus, yes, we have a gazebo and, and it's being used for market. That's wonderful, but will the park have a playground? Will the park have a garden? Will the park have games? Will it have paths? Will it have seating? So I would be a little reluctant to put the fast forward button on naming until we actually have the zone. Once we know every tower is off the table, if we wanna proceed and and focus on that one little area as a council and get a plan for that area, and then we can go out and it would make sense if I'm gonna call a park, theme the park. I feel no reason not to just refer to the downtown park for that. And that's how I would look at that myself. Cause you're naming a gazebo on an open space of ground like today. Let's be clear. So I would think we need a little engagement to name that. I think it's a bigger, it's a bigger decision once we know what lies ahead. That's just my.
Thank you.
Part of your, part of your mission, I'll radio that. Uh, so I firmly believe we need to be a planned place in that area. I, I believe that. Experience so far with a certain coordinator for the market over the last three or four weeks is people identifying where the building park is or the downtown park right now, based on concern on the future of its re-sustainable. There's nobody knows that. So we have to use the closest, the best closest address to that area for people to know about the purpose. So absolutely need a planned place, a concrete one, you know, design. But I do think that having a name, something that's not recognizable, right now is just, it's it's hard for people to locate, so to speak, unless they don't care. Right? So that's, that's my point.
Could we not just simplify and say, uh, Heartland's Pavilion?
Could.
And then, then all of our, have a, have a civic address, you know, whatever it would be. It's probably two twenty-seven. That's the Heartland Pavilion, Main Street. Maybe, maybe that's simple, it's supposed to, to fix that problem.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and that's about right. And anyways, we can, we can roll that. It's just though, again, not from the area, you don't realize how nice Pavilion, you know, it's, it's not.
Well, there must be a civic address.
It's three, three, three.
Three, three, three. So three, three, three means we would be the Heartland Pavilion.
It couldn't be six, six, six next to you.
But anyways, that's, that's my opinion. We're spreading that, you know, the Heartland Pavilion, people on camera, this, and they see our signage and so on and so forth. But yes, I, I do, if you say needs a, a concrete plant. It would be, you know, it'd be nice to start, I guess, and get the gears going and.
Well, I, I think that we waited so long for the Glen Group and then be powered to encompass this as part of the downtown. And if that's not the case, it's not gonna happen. Then there's nothing stopping our council from bringing the jets back on to make a plan for the spark and and then I think the naming would be a little easier.
Yeah. Was that part of the Glen Group's mandate was to give us a a blueprint?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
And it still could be. If this, if the downtown waterfront project gets dialed back to only lands, but the town have access to our homes, you know, they own that park, so there's still gonna be a proposal that gets submitted for some funding if we can make it work.
I do wonder if, this is a very simple thought, but I did wonder. I did wonder if it made sense to just split the project and put the waterfront on, which is subject to a sort of delay. And put everything else in another project.
You mean with the park, so. I, I agree. Back, back to your point, I think maybe our council's will, you know, it wouldn't hurt to put a sign by the room with a three, three, three.
May.
Then put the Pavilion there.
Apartment, parks, civics, two, three, three.
Precise. Yeah, so I mean.
If we have to change it, the name, I think for, for the, for the use of it, I have no problem spending a little money to put a roadside that would directly through that Pavilion Park.
But right now, I believe it is curious to.
You put it on my desk, so the department will go read that.
But yes, affirmative.
That was on, and I said fantastic, there was a Heartland Pavilion, and that would be totally great.
So web solutions, they had to get the logo guidelines completed. And then the very next thing they're going to be looking at is the welcome to signs and the waitfindings signs. And so they are going to come up with the graphics for that and then will be a good lines made. So there's no reason why it couldn't be a blue, colored number, three, 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 somewhere in the pretend of that background.
I think it'd be good.
And I also wanted to mention that the beautiful flower boxes that are down there. So thank you for the addition of those.
Three and the four.
One of the staff is not taking. But thank you for that, for that.
Uh, back to the comment, yeah, if we wanted to pose that as a separate project, I mean, I'm not sure, you know, funding's distracting. How do we handle that?
Definitely could be meant that way. And might be a project we can gain traction on.
Let's move on to item nine five, municipal grant application review. Okay, so included in your package were some of the grant applications that we have received. And I also included in your package some of the first money that have been spent so far this year. So you do have an idea of where we are at in relation to what we had budgeted for the year. I will say that the applications, we'll start with the Waterburg Community Club. I will say that the applications, uh, we'll start with the Waterville Community Club because it is budgeted. Uh, I will say that in previous years, the Waterville Community will have received funding both from, uh, the former LSD of Wakefield and also from Woodstock. So they were part of inside Wakefield and outside Wakefield. So they received funding from both sources. So when you look at, um, the ten thousand dollar ask that was included on, on their application, that is, that is the background for why, uh, they had received ten thousand dollars in years past. They received ten thousand dollars last year because of amalgamation, all of the local community centers received the same funding in twenty twenty-three. So, um, but they do understand this year that it is only the Heartland portion, uh, that they will be receiving there. They do understand that. We did put in four thousand dollars in our budget for the Waterville Community Club. So that is the information background on that application. Uh, the other two applications that you did receive, they're free. And then there is also a third that you had received a, a letter in your package last month for a ride for suicide awareness. They actually, we went back to them for and said, you need to submit an application, which only arrived this morning. But these three grants are social development grants, uh, which we have not, uh, budgeted for specifically. There is a line item on the budget that does refer to, uh, social development other. I know in twenty twenty-three, when Rob had put the budget together, he had had, he had put five thousand dollars in that line item. Uh, this year, that line item, uh, was reduced to one thousand dollars. And because we had put grants to other places and we do have a grant called the Grants Other, but it's not specifically in the line item for social development. So, given that, uh, the three applications that we do have, we've received, uh, an application from River Valley Cancer Support Group, uh, River Valley Cancer Support Group supports in Heartland proper, the, the whole, uh, um, amalgamated community, the entity, um, two to three people per month are supported by, new people are supported by River Valley Cancer Support Group, uh, each month. They have asked us for forty-five hundred dollars. So basically, when a person applies under their funding, uh, they receive fifteen hundred dollars. So that's where the forty-five hundred dollar ask has come from. They're asking for basically one month's worth of what they do for people in our community. Um, we've received an application from Heartland Helpers. They have not given us a specific ask, but what they have told us in their application is that, uh, they provide food bags for approximately sixty families in our area. Uh, when we asked them if they had a bit of a breakdown between, uh, the community of Heartland and the entire entity, they said about fourteen families in the Heartland and the remaining, uh, forty-eight families are in our entire entity, just to give you an idea. So their needs for one month is about three thousand dollars just for food, but they do a lot more than just food. And they included those items that they do, um, on their application. And like I said, the third application came for a ride for suicide, um, awareness. This, and what they do is they actually choose, um, each year who they, that there are uh, other organizations, other nonprofits that do work for suicide awareness. And they decide each year where those dollars are going to be spent. And for this year, it was the Maddie Murphy Memorial Foundation, which is out of Saint John. And, uh, a young lady who had, uh, some issues and, um, they've been doing good work since then to actually support mental health in their area. And again, no specific ask there, um, but just hoping for any donation that they can get to, to support their.
So that was for, they, they specified food costs?
For heart.
No, no, for the, the last one you mentioned, for the right for suicide awareness.
Uh.
They're looking for, to defer some cost related to gathering, I guess.
Yeah, I saw this. I, I read through this quickly. Assist with water and food, yes, where the total cost of planned expenses. And it says on average, we raised five thousand dollars and all proceeds are donated to the chosen recipient of the year, the shooter, the Maddie Murphy Memorial Foundation. So these are the applications we've received so far. Yes, but there is, uh, there is six months. And, um, I will say that I have reached out to someone that has been mentioned as someone we should reach out to in our area. And the only remaining applications that I'm aware of, um, I know that the Coldstream WI is working on theirs and the Royal York Foundation is working on theirs. Other than that, I'm not aware of anything further to come to us because we've done our, our bigger ones already. And so how much is remaining in our grant? So in our grant funds, um, we had budgeted fifty-five thousand dollars and so far we've committed forty-two, three, ninety-seven thousand. Thousand? Yes, so we have approximately thirteen thousand dollars remaining.
So, uh, Mayor, what I would suggest is, uh, we add a new, uh, element to this process. And this has been used another, uh, in month in when they're doing budgets, they'll have a committee, the whole meeting discusses the budget. And what they do is they recommend a motion, and council would go, and it would be something in this way, I've, I've just written it down. Council of Heartland recommends a motion to be put forth toward a municipal grant in the amount of X for blank. Now, in voting, it's not a motion, so it's not official, you're not actually awarding it, you're telling us for our next meeting to prepare a motion to come back to council for a vote, at which time you can amend it, reject it, without any vote on it. But this gives us the green light to take action. So before the Tina, our treasurer, she is mentioned, uh, she can put each one through and we get council's, uh, position. I'm understanding, which again, is not an actual motion, it's a recommendation to put forth a motion, uh, which is as, uh, tells us for our next meeting in July, uh, Williams with the death form. So I'll share this text and I would say if that's amenable to, uh, council, that we can use this from here forward for this, uh, municipal grant process. So you can read them.
I still have a question. Can we revisit that, uh, application with the very school ride for suicide? I'm, I'm not sure what they want the money for.
Okay.
I'm thinking they want, they wanted, they're gonna have a hundred motorcycles that are rallying.
Yes.
Uh, I'm, I'm thinking they want to buy food, some food and like donuts and water for those people that are going to attend the rally. That's what they need money for.
And that's basically when they put their letter forth to us, uh, before, uh, they said that it'll take place Saturday, September seventh, we're, uh, looking forward to welcoming a hundred and fifty or more people. We would greatly appreciate sponsorship, which can look like a financial donation or donation of items to use as door prizes or auction items.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and that, that money's going to a charity in Saint John where it's distributed to some recipient that they.
So this year, yes, it would go to the Maddie Murphy Foundation.
Right.
Uh, so, what Rob has written here is the Council of Heartland recommends a motion to be put forth to award a municipal grant in the amount of, so do they fill it in or the total?
What we would recommend.
Okay.
What we as the county recommend, we've sort of discussed, be prepared to have a. We have, but we have three grants before us.
We have.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
So actually you have four. We, so to begin with, I would say that, uh, recommend to put forth a award, a municipal grant in the amount of four thousand dollars for the Waterville Community Club. As budgeted. And that's all we, and they should vote.
And we can, yeah, think about. Yes, because we're recommending motion, we're not reporting motion, we're just recommending the motion be prepared for our next meeting in council.
Okay.
It's what they do with the budget.
Okay.
And this way we have specifics, right? You said Waterville?
Yes, four thousand dollars. So does the mayor ask for the?
Somebody else make that motion in the center.
Right, that's the way I.
It's not clear on the wording, but nobody is asking for a motion, I guess, to say.
Well, he's asking us to put this forward.
He's asking us to, to decide.
Recommend the motion be, be decided next week.
Yeah.
That.
Councilor Smith.
Go ahead.
Recommended the Council of Heartland that we put forth an award for a municipal grant for Waterville in the amount of four thousand dollars for next meeting.
As budgeted. I know, sorry, we, we're kind of these supply, but Council of Heartland recommends a motion to be put forth to award a municipal grant in the amount of four thousand dollars for Waterville, please, and. Yes. So you're recommending a motion to be put forward. And you're not supposed to say that, but it would be the next meeting.
Do you make the motion?
I, I did, Rob just did it for me as a up to here.
Apparently the clerk didn't put forward a motion.
Second motion.
You can't put forward.
Okay, oh, there you go.
There you go, Tina, go ahead.
It's given.
Oh, she did.
She did.
Okay.
It has been.
The motion has been put forward.
Definitely.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question? All those in favor, raise your right hand. So the next one is, um, River Valley Cancer Support.
River Valley. Unless the man.
They had requested forty-five hundred dollars. And we had suggested that we need to do it.
Okay, anyway.
The Council of Heartland recommends that a motion be put forward that River Valley Cancer Support Society receives a total of fifteen hundred dollars at this point in time and recommends that council reconsider this another time as well later in the year.
Second.
Motion has been moved to a second meeting. Any question? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion is cleared. And then Heartland Helpers. Uh, they didn't make any specific ask, um, I mean, didn't specifically say, in the past, we've given two hundred and fifty dollars a year to Heartland Helpers. Um.
Here it says they requested three thousand. And.
But they spent three thousand.
Oh. Can I interject for a moment?
Yes.
Just having a recent, uh, benefit in, uh, in the District of Carlton North for schools, for example, um, they just raised thirty thousand dollars for, for a number of students within the schools, right? But this is what it costs per year. And, uh, and certainly that was a marginal lumber, but that, but they raised it and divided that between the schools in the, in the existing area. And with the number of families that are being suggested here that are feeding, uh, a few thousand dollars doesn't even hit the, doesn't even touch it, right? Uh, but it is directly impacting the lives of multiple citizens in our community. So I think there should be, uh, a considerable amount perhaps put forward within the Heartland for that reason. But that's just my, that's my few cents, given what I know about the three choices.
So we could make direct donation for one month, but there's about three thousand dollars, according to what she has in here.
If we'd done two hundred and fifty in the past, doesn't, you know, then, I don't know if it's, um, great since we've gotten to this point, but, you know. Guess that's my thoughts.
Do we hear two? I can't option off, but, but I do, I, I think we, we should be looking at, we're talking about sixty families is what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't have my, I don't have my tongue in my words about this, so, but just, thank you.
Very respectful, just because I'm wondering, you know, how much that money is there to us? So if I'm like, we should have been practically thirteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Wired to including the fifteen hundred dollars in that fact, that we just printed, so it takes in ten, eleven thousand five hundred dollars, so. Um, you know, the rest of the bracket, if you all probably today's society is still alive from donations or anything, I mean, and three thousand dollars would be ideal in perfect circumstances. And seeing it wasn't budgeted, um, I would feel that that's, you know, their, uh, contribution would be more than fair to start. And by all means, we understand the importance of this, of this, um, of this group and you can revisit that as well. Come September, October, closer to Christmas, if there's money left in the budget, that'd be a good time to help them in forms of food and making other things. That's just my recommendation.
I'll second that. So the Council of Heartland recommends a motion to be put forth to award a municipal grant in the amount of a thousand dollars for Heartland Helpers at this time to be revisited down the road as seen fit?
Motion's been moved into something.
Yeah.
Any question? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is cleared. Yeah, no, it's, was there one more? Just the ride for suicide. And, uh, they didn't make any specific request, uh, recommendation.
Did I ask for the right to insight, uh, uh, they're stopping it, are you, you like to play?
They.
They have in the past. It's a different, in a different room each year.
But that's a different thing, that's, uh, you mean that when they stop at the hospital?
That's, that's a different. No, you're thinking about the toy ride.
Yeah.
There's. Same room every year. Take place on Saturday, September seventh, and we'll start and move back to J and T Power Sports in Woodstock. So whether they actually pass through Heartland, I'm not sure.
Well, my reason for asking is, is maybe if we use a room, we can engage some of the local vendors to see if they want to participate as well.
Okay.
So maybe the local counties downtown, what would be, uh, C K News or twelve eight two, or whoever might want to be involved with that. And then maybe, you know, in lieu, in lieu of just giving the money, you can give a proposition. Yeah, that's saying, perhaps you picture it and make a social media event and maybe give some waters and blow us last night, too, but it'd be more than just. It won't be for them too, because it would be, uh, some, um, some visual aspects of what we're trying to do against a lot of others.
So I can reach back out to them and then we can get back to you at the next meeting, huh?
I think that is it.
And well, they say they may possibly ride through again for Syria.
Okay, so our next meeting is Tuesday, July ninth, at six thirty, that's our regular meeting. And the twenty-third of July is our council of the whole. At six thirty, you start.
Your worship, I would put forth a motion for a term, second.
All those in favor? Mission fans.
Just wanted to make sure. I think you've told me that before.